I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. The date is June 6, 2012. The time is approximately 6:03. Please stand for a moment of silence. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we start, we have had a couple of iterations of tonight's agenda. I'm just going to call on the city manager so that we're all, we all have the same agenda. If you could just go over the sequence, please.
Due to the nature of the amended agenda, some of the items will be postponed at future meetings. Agenda item number 14, the council may or may not address that particular item, but I did inform city engineer David King not to travel to Satellite Beach because of the uncertainty of the length of this meeting. We did delay agenda item number 15 until the June 20 meeting. The council may not wish to look at all the comp plan amendments, but the military compatibility issue must be addressed by the council prior to June 30. So this will need to be on your agenda for the June 20 meeting. Your amendments to council policies and procedures is something that the council can determine based upon the time. But the major item was the CPAB. That was scheduled for 75 minutes. That has been removed.
Okay, and everything else is normal. So, agenda item number three, we'll do recognition of dedicated service to city and youth of the community by Bob and Joan Hart. Mr. Crotty.
Thank you. Chief Pearson will make this presentation. But before we recognize Bob and Joan for their outstanding service to the city, all school crossing guards need to be praised for their service. Why they receive some compensation, they are essentially interested in the youth of the community, devote substantial amount of their time. To be a crossing guard, at 7 o'clock in the morning, you put a uniform on. You go to your post for an hour. You come home and you take off your uniform. At 2 o'clock, you put your uniform back on. You come in and cross the kids at the school, go home and take the uniform off. For that, we pay you between $14 and $15 a day. These are community-minded citizens that have the best interests of the youth. So I salute them all, and the two here this evening are real special people.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As the city manager said, I'd like to get Bob and Joan, if you could just come on up here for a second. Bob and Joan have been the dynamic duo for us for 14 years. And like city manager said, every day without fail, rain or shine, sleet, snow, and the whole person thing, they're there. But they weren't just there. You know, you can tell the difference between people that are there and people that come in and they do something and they collect a paycheck and they go home. Well, they clearly were not doing it for the paycheck. They were doing it for the kids, just like the city manager said. And you could tell because they knew every single kid. They knew their name, they knew their siblings, and they knew their parents. And I just want to tell, if you don't mind, one very, very short story. My daughter, they crossed both of my kids all through Surfside and many, many, many other people's kids all through their whole time at Surfside. And one particular afternoon, my, or morning, my wife was taking my daughter to school. And she said, "You know what? It looks like it might rain. I'll just take you right to the loop and you can go right in." And she said, "No, if you don't mind, just take me to the crossing." I'm like, "Normal." And she says, "Well, I just figured I would have to walk and, you know, it might rain." And she says, "Yeah, but then I don't get to say hi to Ms. Joan." So she made, so she took her, and from then on, she took her every day. Even though she was driving her, she could have gone in and dropped her and been five steps from her class, but she went to the other direction to go to the crossing, to say hi to the two of them, to walk back to school. And I just think that's just a small example of why you are so appreciated after 14 years. And not only did you do an excellent job, but you have a smile on your face and you look sharp, and you're just as pleasant a people to be around as I've ever been around. And it has been my pleasure to have been able to work with you and see you and come by in the mornings, I'm making my rounds through the city and I'm checking on everybody. It just started my day so appropriately and so nicely when my first, my first interaction with the people was to see you two and to say hi and to smile and occasionally talk about a golf game or two. We have something that we'd like to give you, and I think you'll really enjoy this. This is a little collage that Lori Krib, who is here, who is, Lori Krib is their, there she is, thank you. Lori Krib is their supervisor. And she put together a nice collage of a bunch of pictures that, of them in action, and had all the crossing guards sign it. And I just think it's really nice, and it's just a little...
We don't usually drink before...
That's your story and you're sticking to it.
And I'd just like to say, these are Satellite Beach pins. Thank you very much on behalf of the city. Now, your stop sign has holes in it.
Yes.
Why is that?
To keep the wind from blowing out.
Oh, all right, all right. So that's good.
I said, "We've been shooting up here." No, that's because it's so, because that's too much rain.
Well, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, not really. We enjoyed what we were doing. We love the kids. We love the parents and the grandparents. Now, we don't have to, and our animals, too. We have the animals, too. But it's been a nice journey. I have to say, I'm glad we're here.
Would you stick your hands there? It's been a while.
Thank you.
Thank you. You look sharp in your uniform, by the way. I wanted to take you to the base with me on a couple of vacations.
Every day.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Over here.
Mr. Robinson.
Miss your crossing kids.
God bless you both. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I understand you have a perfect crossing.
You know, it's good.
We are so fortunate.
Agenda item number 3B is welcome to Ori Tao, the new owner of the former property, well, formerly known as Satellite Arms. Is Ori here?
He might be arriving later, but...
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item is agenda item number four. This is known as city manager separation and transition issues. There are actually three parts to agenda item number four, and I'd like to take them in three parts. The first is an ordinance number 1056. And then we'll read 1056 and we'll explain it, and then have citizens' comments after that. The next, or part B, is what's called the separation agreement. And the separation agreement is what the council and the city manager will discuss with your comments. Part C is on the second page, and it is known as transition issues. It says that, you know, if part A and B are approved, then an interim city manager would have to be in the seat immediately. So I'd like to do those just so that, to keep, to keep it in perspective, A, B, and C, I will ask, I'll start by asking the attorney, Mr. Beetle, on part 4A to read them, ordinance number 1056, please.
May I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I think it might be more appropriate to do B first, the separation, and then the ordinance. So I'd like to get the council's input on that.
Why is that? I think 1056 is, isn't for separation. It's just a generic ordinance, isn't it?
No, it goes, it ties in with the separation. So, and input from the council?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, you don't ask for input from the council. I do.
Okay.
Okay? That's it.
Interesting.
It is interesting, and it's true. So you don't. If you want to bring something up to me, then I'll ask the council.
Okay. Do you have your charter with you, Mr. Mayor?
I do.
And what does it say that your job is to chair the, to chair the meeting? If I would like to bring...
Listen, I'm not going to start. You can ask, and then I will discuss with the council.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, it is interesting. And that's the purpose of it.
So you're saying the council's not allowed to discuss this?
I didn't say that. I said, "I ask the council. You don't."
All right, fine.
Okay, so, you want to bring it up? That's fine. Lloyd? ABC, BAC, AB?
Can I offer some input? It might be helpful, and, you know, I ordered this without any, you know, thought to having prepared this type of agenda previously. And I have some input initially that gives overview on each of those three items, particularly the first two. So, you know, I think the ordinance 1056 will be considered at some point, but I think there's, you know, some fruitful discussion that we can have that I plan to talk about that's part of the severance leading into 1056. So it may be useful to just have some initial input from the council and myself, because this has been an issue that has been discussed at a number of meetings previously. As I reported, I met individually with each council member over the past two weeks, and I might have some input that would make all this a little more understandable.
Okay, we can do that. And I also want to say that in the state of Florida, the procedures that are taking place now take place in all of the 415 cities. The city manager and the city council work like this. The city manager works for the city council. Okay? So this is nothing that hasn't happened in Palm Beach County, other counties, other cities throughout. It is just a normal procedure. So, and I'll just start with that, and then I'll throw it back to city manager. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Glad to say, over the last couple of weeks, I've spoken individually with each of the council members, and usually, most city managers brief their council on items on the agenda. That's never been my policy. I don't believe any of the council members have ever been in my office for a briefing on what's going to be discussed at the council meeting. So sometimes our initial discussions are a little rough because we're all hearing it for the first time in the reactions, and it's not a rehearsed presentation. But as a result of those meetings, I've come to the conclusion that at this point in time, the best interest of the city, myself, and the council can be served with the transition in the position of city manager. I have devoted substantial energies over the last seven months to try to move forward the city, and now to the point where I believe a change is necessary. I discussed that very directly with the members of councils over the past two weeks. I believe there's at least a consensus based upon the feedback that I received that a transition such as this might, might be in order and in the best interest of the city. I've had the unique honor and privilege to have been your city manager for 27 years. That's fairly unusual in this business, and typically, the average duration is about five to seven years. And so separation issues are fairly commonplace, even though in the 35 years and 192 days that I've been a city manager, this is the first time I've discussed this with a council. But I am at peace that this is the best course to take at this particular time, and I would respect everyone, or ask everyone to respect my position, that this is what's best for the Crotty family, the city, and the council. So having said that, my current employment agreement with the city provides for a severance of one year, should the council desire to terminate my, my agreement. I've provided you with information regarding an estimate of what a one-year severance would cost. That's about $170,000, plus in accordance with the personnel policy, buyout of vacation in sick leave, being a senior employee, and as someone told you a few months ago, I don't take vacation time. That number is $36,000. Back in February, I spoke with the council and also wrote to the council that I was very pleased a number of years ago when the city council put the one-year severance agreement in my contract, because at that time I had a young family, and that type of security was very important to me. My personal situation is substantially different today than it was in the 1990s. We have talked about the change in the state law that any employment agreement entered into after July 1 of 2011, the severance is limited to 20 weeks. I indicated that I'd be willing to look at an exit strategy that approximated that 20 weeks. So what I have done is put together a proposal for you that will bring about the transition that I believe at this point is necessary, and what, and so this ties into ordinance number 1056. Ordinance 1056 would provide for an amendment to the city's retirement plan for general employees. It would amend the plan to state that, that the general employees pension plan would provide for normal retirement for a member who has reached 59 years of age with 25 years or more of credited service. I've provided the council with a breakdown of the various calculations provided by the actuary, and you'll note that the first three or four are fairly difficult to understand because they have multi-year implications. They tie into the accrued unfunded liability. And last Friday afternoon, driving home from the Florida City and County Management Conference, I discussed with Finance Director Brenda Raver that the best option to finalize an ordinance such as this would be provide for a one-time payment. It's much easier to understand. And so the actuary calculated out that the improvement of, in this pension plan for a one-time payment based upon my retirement on July 1 would be $141,137. How do we accomplish that? If the city, I would like to ask the city to look at the 20-week severance pay that is in the state law, even though my contract says one year. That equals about $65,550. I would apply all my accumulated vacation leave and 50% of my eligible sick leave to this payment, and I would bring to the table the balance of $49,795 from my 457 401K type of account for public employees to pay the difference. And I would waive any right to any additional benefit on the payout of sick leave. If this proposal is implemented, the Finance Director reports that once my retirement occurs, the estimated reduced pension contributions will be, on an annualized basis, $131,000 a year. Also, any cost for the improvement of the plan would be paid by that one-time funding scenario that I have outlined. Under ordinance 1056, my retirement date would be July 1, 2012, and I offered this proposal to the city council in the spirit of how Satellite Beach treated me over the last 27 years, and they have valued me as an employee, and I believe such a resolution to my employment status with the city is fair and reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crotty. Jim?
I'd like to put 1056 on the table. If you'd be able to read that for the record, please.
Ordinance number 1056, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 46, Article 2 of the City of Satellite Beach Code of Ordinances, Pension Plan for General Employees, Section 46-33A1, to allow members who have attained the age of 59 years with 25 or more years of credited service as of June 1, 2012, to be eligible for normal retirement benefits, provided an application for normal retirement is submitted to the Board of Trustees within 10 days following the adoption of this ordinance, providing a severability clause, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1056.
Thank you. Let me bring it back to the council for a discussion on the ordinance.
Mr. Crotty, and I saw in an email in here where you made the point, and it was well made, that you're the only person that can qualify for this.
Under how it is crafted, that is true, and the city attorney can address the legality of that. We had the pension attorney who wrote that say it is legal to do that.
Okay. And the limiting time on this is that second-to-last line, correct?
Yes.
The 10 days following adoption of this ordinance?
Anyone who's eligible must do it within 10 days. If they fail to do it within 10 days, and then if they do, they must retire July 1.
Okay.
Any comments?
In my experience with departures from companies, normally, the departures happen immediately, once a person announces their resignation. There's a lot of reasons for that, none that I would attribute to Mr. Crotty, but it may, it may benefit us to think about that.
But that'd be more in the separation agreement, wouldn't it?
What?
I would imagine. I don't think it'd be in the ordinance.
Mr. Beetle, contract created by ordinance, is it two readings of this ordinance to do that?
Well, the ordinance has to be read twice. The agreement would be just approved pursuant to, probably at the same time the second reading is, but it's not part of the ordinance. If anything, it's actually the other way. The ordinance is actually going to be part of whatever the agreement's going to be. That's going to be a contingency in the contract.
I hear what you're saying. A lot of times that, that is, I think, for misconduct or some, some reason that the separation would take place. You know, somebody comes in and they say, "You have malfeasance or something. You've done something wrong." And that you, you know, you come in with two guards, you pick up your stuff, and you leave.
Well, my last company, people, they basically, the HR director would show up at your door, whether it was a layoff or termination for cause, anything like that. She'd just show up at your door with a cart, and out you went that day. But they would still give them a severance, you know, of equal to like two weeks.
Again, I think this is better debated in the separation agreement section, but, but I think we all probably have ideas. I know I do on that.
Okay. All right, I'd like to open ordinance number 1056 for public comment. I'd like you to please ensure that your comments are only on the ordinance which states that those that have attained the age of 59 years with 25 or more years of credited service are eligible for normal retirement benefits. Is there any public comment? All right, at this time, I'd like to bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1056 as read. On first reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Billman, second by Councilman French. Any other comment? Lenore?
Councilman Dina?
Yes.
Councilman French?
Yes.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Franzen?
Yes. And ordinance number 1056 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the separation agreement that you have outlined, any comments to start with that?
Does the council feel comfortable with me participating in this discussion? So let me share my thoughts, then, if there's, is there any objection? The severance agreement, as I pointed out in the memo that I sent to you last evening, from my standpoint, it's simply a matter of how we will fund ordinance 1056. You know, there'll be some statement in there that within so many days, the funds will be transferred for, for my contribution to it. The city attorney has looked, preliminarily looked at some issues regarding severance agreements. I did indicate that transition in the position of city manager is a fairly common occurrence in municipalities. I know there are a number of separation agreements out there that we could obtain copies that would assist. A member of council has talked to me about the fact that once a decision is made for change in leadership, and following up on Councilman French's comments, is it desirable to have, you know, an immediate transition? I am receptive to either of those alternatives. One thing I would like the council to consider in the discussion is that if, if that decision is made, that, you know, once this meeting is over, then you put on leave until July 1 or whatever, that, that's clearly acceptable because it's fairly common. The issue is, what I'd like to do is have the opportunity, first of all, to work with the city attorney on the severance agreement for my input to it. And second, and if it's the issue of during working hours, I'd like to have the opportunity to create a spreadsheet on every project that we have undertaken, and there are many, and to provide an updated status report and, and the key folks that are handling that. And I would do that during non-working hours, because it would be very challenging to anyone to come in, take over, and get us to speak quickly on those projects. So I would want to do that if the council's comfortable with me doing it.
All right, let me bring this back to the council for comments.
If I could just comment on the timing issue. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, but I also have seen it, and I think you have too, in the military, when there's a change of command, the commander leaves. That's it. The new, the new commander's in charge, and it's not, it's not a bad thing. It's not a good thing. It's just a thing. So I, and I think that's what we have here. What I was going to ask was exactly what Mr. Crotty suggested. As well as that, we always had continuity books, just like I asked for the continuity book for the CRA director. I think that would be a wonderful thing to get, is a continuity book, you know, where the, what the status is of the projects and who's the, you know, who the, the doer is and that sort of thing. I think that'd be a valid thing to have. So I think, I think Mr. Crotty's suggestion about, you know, a terminal leave sort of a thing is valid. I would support something like that.
Any comments?
Okay, I do have a few comments, and I haven't said much, but I do have a problem with the separation. I think that the fourth quarter of any fiscal year is the most important. There is a budget which includes a tremendous amount of work, and we go into a very critical season of weather problems. City manager has handled us through each of those crises. Budget and weather. I'm not going to mention the H-word. Because I really, but hostile weather. And Mr. Crotty, as you know, has always been there. He has never left. He has lived in the police station. He knows how to command his departments. Critically leaving during this time to appoint an interim manager is wrong. Okay, the other thing I want to say is more personal, and one of the things that we know that any time any of us write an email, a phone call to City Hall, Mr. Crotty is there. He doesn't get sick. Some of you say he gets sick, he should take sick leave. He's got 1,000 hours built up. He doesn't get sick. He is there. We are taking his sick leave to zero. Well, no, we're, we're not giving it to him in a check. We're wrapping it into a retirement package, that he doesn't have to bring as much money to the table. So instead of commending him for being healthy, we're condemning him for coming to work. I find that wrong. We are asking city manager to take out of his pocket $49,500 to retire. For him to retire, he needs to bring to the table almost $50,000. 27 years of service, this is wrong. I've talked to Mike. He's okay with leaving. 27 years is a formidable career. I had 23, 24, 30. A lot, a lot of us have retired in this room, and retirement is okay. There is life after work. However, I am strong that I don't think that the city manager should bring money to the table. I think the city has a binding contract with him, signed, sealed, and delivered, and we should own up to our words of what we signed. If we put our name on a dotted line, you weren't here, you guys weren't here, but others were, elected officials. We put our name on the dotted line, we made a contract. Mr. Crotty is conceding many of those items. But I don't think vacation and leave pay, sick leave is part of this equation. If the terminal leave goes in, we've all been on terminal leave. Many of you know, 25 to 30% of the community is military, understands what terminal leave is. You get paid, but you don't come to work because you have accumulated days. That's, I'm sure that there's, you have 25 weeks of sick time accumulated. So that is just my input. I don't think, I'd just like to throw that out there, if we can work on something where the, where the city manager does not have to bring so much money to the table just to normally retire, I'd like us to discuss that. If you don't think that that's workable, I'd just like to hear. I don't understand.
The way I understand it is, he had the option of being paid for his contract, it's signed that we are obligated to pay the one-year severance and the things like that. And it was, it's my understanding that he came to us with this optional package. So it seems a little bit strange to hear you say that it's not right that what we're doing. I think he came to us with it. I had no input on this package that he's presented to us.
I think it was negotiated.
It wasn't by me, so I don't know.
And I'm going to have to put input in here. I did meet with the city manager, and I have the memo here. We met on May 22nd, and we basically had a heart-to-heart. And I asked him, "What would you like to do?" And he presented this to us.
Can I, and I appreciate the mayor's comments. The issue is, what is before you is strictly my proposal as an alternate to the employment agreement. I indicated that if I, if we were going to craft an exit strategy, I said this a number of months ago, I would try to do that within the 26, or the 20-week of the state of Florida. This is my proposal. Certainly, if you wanted to pay extra money, I wouldn't. But this proposal was submitted to you, consistent with what I said I would do, and I stand behind this, and I believe this is a fair exit strategy, and, but I do appreciate the mayor's comments. But it is my proposal to you.
And one other thing I will say for the council's negotiation strategy. Originally, the age was 62 to retire, and then you lost a percentage for each year you retired. That is not on the table. By ordinance 1056, that comes down to 100% of retirement, which is a good negotiating with politics is input.
The value is there for both the city and me.
That was a good, because I think it was, what was it, Mike? 4% a year or something? So it's just...
It was six, in the six range.
So this gives more money back per month.
It's a fair proposal.
So we came partway, he's coming partway.
Yeah. It is, but I thought I had to say, it is a negotiated, political, probably good agreement.
My issue with the sick leave is just this. You're right, I wasn't here when sick leave was voted in or where it was written into the employee policy this way. And obviously, we have talked about this in other council meetings, and this is one of the issues that we need to, we need to get to. Part of the reason that this city's in so much debt, frankly, is because of decisions that have been made in the past like this. I have, I have worked, you know, in industry now for seven, going on seven years, eight years, and I've never seen a private company that pays out sick leave. Never seen it. I've never seen a private company that allows sick leave to accumulate as much as the city does. Sick leave is good. We need sick leave. Sick leave needs to be taken when people are sick. And then if it goes longer than that, you go on short-term disability, which we also pay for and we also have. So I would offer that the whole sick leave argument is kind of, it kind of gets me because we shouldn't be doing it anyway. You're right. You know, it's on the books now, but we're looking to change that. And Mr. Carrati's point to me, and it was very well taken, is, you know, you guys are going to look at the employment policies to try to start bringing our city employees into industry standards. What would it look like if he walked out the door with 100% sick leave, then the next person who goes out the door doesn't get it?
Okay. And I did want to bring up the 6% per year for three years, which is substantial. Sick leave, and we have agreed to talk about it, but we haven't decided on it.
No, we haven't. But it's going to be talked about.
I understand that.
And then to your point about the timing and the H-word. I can vividly remember when General Pavlovich left and Mark Owen showed up. Three days after Mark Owen, I think, took command, we had H-word Francis.
I know, but...
And guess what? The reason we got through that is because all of the department heads that worked for us out there knew their job. These department heads know their job. But so, that, I understand the argument, Mr. Mayor, but I don't think that it's...
I know. There was a deputy commander in place, though.
And we got him too. But I'll tell you what, we have something they didn't have, a board of directors. We have a council.
I understand. I understand. Okay. On the separation agreement, we have it in front of us. I just wanted to, all right, council, you okay with it? Cheryl, you okay with it? Before I go for public comment?
You can go for comment.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open it for public comment. Since we are taping, I know it's going to come up in our council procedures. At the last meeting, somebody had brought up, when we asked you to come to the podium to state your name and address, since we are on like a YouTube, you may substitute resident or non-resident. We have to vote on that tonight, but I think that's a good thing. So your address is not on YouTube if you do not want it to be. We'd like you to come up. We'd like you to stick to the topic. Testimonials for Mr. Carrati were made on February 8th. I mean, hundreds, hundreds. It's not a testimonial tonight. We have a separation contract that Mr. Carrati has looked at, the council has reviewed. Hopefully, some of you have looked at. What we want to discuss is the merits of that and your thoughts on that. So if you raise your hand, I would recognize you, Vic, and you may come. And name and resident or non-resident or address.
Vic Berngart, non-resident. Mr. Mayor and council, and Mike Carrati, Mr. Beadle. As a person who has had countless years of experience with top five Fortune 100 companies in the United States, let me just briefly say, we have never paid out sick leave like this. And to the comment with newly installed council member Lloyd French, I agree with your comments. When I was with Citicorp in Wall Street at the highest level, it was our policy, not as a negative or a detriment, it was our policy, no matter how high up you were in the organization, when you left, a guard would go with you with your belongings and lead you out the door. That was it. In Exxon, where I was on the road to be the chief executive officer of Exxon Corporation, we had a similar type of policy. It is not meant in any way, shape, or form in private industry to be negative. It is a positive thing for the long-term health of private industry. Likewise, I have been in the highest levels of municipal government, and we always followed that same policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
Is there any civility clause? I can't come up and talk without someone passing a remark to me. Ma'am?
Kathleen?
Kathleen Ocarola, Satellite Beach resident. Honestly, we need to start invoking the civility thing, sir. I've had many jobs in my lifetime, NASA, Air Force, EPA, Cape Canaveral Air Force Station. I have never, ever, ever gotten half a day sick leave paid out if I've left a job, whether I was laid off, fired, or resigned on my own, period. Second of all, my spouse is a retired CB chief in the Navy that's been there 21 years, worked 24/7 every single day in those 21 years. He was sick one day his entire career because he had pneumonia, and they put him in the hospital at Cape Canaveral. He got paid no sick leave when he left his military service. We haven't had an H-word since 2004. I wouldn't be so concerned about that. It's been eight years, knock on wood. Let's not discuss that someone has to be here because we're going to have an H-word. We're prepared. We lived here. We know what to do. There's no need for a special spreadsheet or wait until July or this or that. If you do not have a spreadsheet currently in hand on your desk with all your projects, who's in charge, prices, blah, 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 then you're not inactive, and you're not doing your job correctly as a city manager. I hope to God you don't have to create that all of a sudden at the last minute. You should have that right now where someone could go in your computer and extract it. I have it for my company, and I'm just a little pee on it. One other thing. Like I said, my projects are in a spreadsheet right now, and you're supposed to have that if you're a good employee. Sick leave is a benefit, and it's not a means to additional income. Thank you.
Mr. Uteck? Thank you.
And I hope I'm not going to sit down and have this lady belittle me.
I only have a 2020 hearing. I can't, we're taking care of...
Right here on YouTube. This lady right here.
Thank you. Oh, my word. Mr. Uteck, good evening.
My name is Uteck, Pat Uteck, and I am a resident, have been for a long time. What you're proposing is essentially a violation of every contract law thing that I've ever heard of. There is a contract between this city and Mr. Carrati. I see no way that you can abrogate that contract at all. It's in effect. It's signed by both parties, and that's it. You must stick to the letter of that contract. Now, I have certain, well, I served as chairman of a five-man group that reviewed all of the applications for Mr. Carrati's job, which he ultimately won. We had 100 and some, about 100, applications. Salary and severance pay packages, salary was a discussion, severance pay was not. Now, the city has agreed to a certain specific separation package, and that's it. I see no way that you can change that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Graham, Satellite Beach resident. I wasn't going to say anything until Mr. Uteck, but it's common practice in business, even after contracts are signed, for somebody to offer more than what was originally on the table, or to request less than what was originally on the table. So the contract was signed on a given day, and a counteroffer has been made after the fact. And if there's no argument amongst any of the vested parties, then the new agreement is as valid as the old agreement. So in that regard, Mr. Carrati, by the way, I'm disheartened that you're leaving now. That's a loss of leadership that is going to be hard to fill in the short term. So for whatever that's, but the man seems to be putting on the table an offer that he finds reasonable. And just from the initial review of it, for what he could ask for, it seems extremely generous. So it's standard business practice. If everybody agrees to something, then the contract that was signed yesterday goes away, and the agreement that we signed today is what we do.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Bob Morton, Satellite Beach resident. If a contract exists between two people or two entities, and both agree to a change, then a change can be effected and signed by both.
Thank you. Mr. Beadle, before we have other comments on that, have you found that portion in the contract that alludes to that? Just says that?
There's nothing in there about a modification, per se, but contracts can always be modified as long as the contracting parties agree that it can be modified, as long as there's consideration flowing in each direction, which there would be in this case, so.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Don McLendon, resident. I agree with the past speaker that, I think it's pretty clear, Mr. Beadle just illustrated that Mr. Carrati's alternative severance package, if agreed by all parties, is perfectly legal. As far as the expediency of changing the reign, I'll give a short illustration. I've mentioned before here at this podium that I was chief engineer for about 19 years on one of the world's most sophisticated merchant ships, an LNG carrier. Those ships were reflagged, and there was a schedule of when we would pull into port, we would all walk down a gangway, and a whole new crew would walk on, an active ship in service. That's quite a feat to pull off. The guy that sat at my desk had never sailed on an LNG vessel, so that's the board of directors' problem here. That individual was fired three weeks, or three months after he sat at my desk. He's totally inept at the job. He had no experience at the job, and had a lot of problems with the ship. Company yanked him out and fired him. That was a, one day, we were operating the ship ourselves. We pulled into harbor Nagasaki, put the anchor down. Ship's in perfectly good shape, all the lights are on, which is always a good thing on a We walked down the gangway, and that's, in one way, what is being asked of Mr. Carrati. If that method is what is indeed going to happen here, I just caution you to be very careful who you pick to fill those shoes, because you're talking 26 years.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Lorraine Gott, longtime city resident. Mr. Carrati is the premier city manager in this county. It is safe to say he is a premier city manager in this whole state. He has served longer as city manager than anybody else in Brevard County. And he has led this city through some absolutely magnificent times and built a city that every one of us can be proud of. And now you sit here trying to nickel and dime him as if he were some five-year-long employee who hadn't really done much. You have a binding contract with this man, and you need to honor it. The fact that he is willing to negotiate so much stuff away tells those of us who know him well just how badly he wants to escape the hellish work environment that all of this council, except the mayor, have created for him. Thank you.
Amy outside, Joel?
Joel Schubert, U.S. resident for a long time. The election's over, and you guys are here. I want the citizens of Satellite Beach to hear that. The election is over, and we have a city council. I don't know if Mike was forced into this. I don't believe he was. If he was, I'm sorry that that happened. You and I have known each other for a long time. The city needs to come together. I see such nitpicking up here. If Mike wants to leave for whatever reason, work with him. Don't shaft him. Don't let yourself get shafted. You have a contract. If you want out, that's your choice. But the citizens of Satellite Beach need to understand the job of the city council is to look after the city. That's what your job is. Mike, that's what your job is. And you look after yourself, too. Leave the nitpicky chicken-esque, for an eternity, behind. Let's... Let's move on. The city needs to move on. Thanks.
Other, thank you. Other public comment? Ed? I didn't see another.
I didn't see. Ed Kenberg, I don't know if I'm a long-term resident or not, 18 years, but I wanted to commend both sides, if they are sides, for working hard on this issue. Mike's done a great job. The only thing, issue I have is concerning the transition period, because I think we do need a transition period. I know a lot of small business owners, and I appreciate this lady, and I wish she was one of my employees, that keeps a spreadsheet on her desk every day about where her major projects are and what needs to be done. But the reality of it is, is many of us don't keep those kinds of spreadsheets. We're busy, we're taking care of immediate problems, and in Mike's case, he is always on the spot, by phone or by person whenever you come by. I think we need some kind of transitionary phase, whether Mike agrees to come in after hours and put together his spreadsheet, or however we do it. But the idea of somebody, because they're leaving, has to be locked out, is just a mistake. I know a lot of companies, it's important because there's bad feelings on one side or the other, some have been fired, they've resigned, or whatever it is. But this is a retirement, and there is a process where you can recognize, as many people in the military declare their retirement, a month, two months, six months before they're going to actually retire, and continue to provide service in that same job. So, I think that one thing we should do, however you decide the details on how it's paid or accounted for, is that every opportunity should be made available to Mike to transition successfully, so that he leaves behind a good detailed list of what he thinks is important, and can leave his final impressions out there for the new interim city manager or permanent city manager. So, that's the only consideration I would ask you to take into concern, is we have to have a reasonable period of time in which Mike can continue to wrap up the business he's been working on.
Thank you. Other public comment? I see no more people interested in approaching the podium, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
I think Mr. Kenberg's point about the military retirement is a good one. I mean, they do allow you to basically project officially your retirement up to one year before you retire, and it would be, you know, I don't think that we suffer any ill will or any adverse impact in the military as a result. I think we continue to get top-notch devoted service regardless. With that said, we will need to have a transition, and whether that transition is tonight or two weeks from tonight, all right, it has to be a smart one, it has to be tempered with consideration of the credentials of the person who sits in the temporary seat, while they leverage the expertise of department heads to cover us in the event of an emergency. But it is a transition that's been mutually agreed to, all right, and we need to honor that agreement.
I think the argument for the contracts have been mitigated, so I don't think those are there. I think we've got two sides that both agree. With regard to Councilman French's and Ed's point about terminal leave and the fact that the military does it all the time, that's a fact, they do. However, when it comes to a commander, a commander leaves. Have you ever seen a commander stick around while another commander comes and takes over? I've never seen it.
Well, it is announced, though, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, like when AFTAC had a change, I mean, they announced it. I don't...
Here's what I was going to suggest. I was going to suggest that we consider, as a group, naming a interim city manager, as our charter says we have to do immediately. Make that person in charge, but allow Mike to do what Mike needs to do to transition and to help that person transition. That's a, I think that's a valid coming to the middle.
I'm not going to speak for the city manager, so I guess I shouldn't, but if I were he, I would just leave and take terminal leave. I mean, I would just say tomorrow. Why? I'm not in, and I don't want to speak for you, Mike, but that's what I would say. I have a thousand hours of time that is going to fall on the floor.
So, you're going to take sick leave when you're not sick? Is that legal?
I can take terminal leave.
But you can take your vacation.
I can take vacation.
You can't take sick leave.
But I can, you know, you can do something, so why would you want to take him out of the, he still has things that need to be signed, and a two-week transition, I think it's a two-week transition, if we were going to use the second reading, is 10 days. We're talking 10 days for 27 years. I don't, I'm not sure that you, and if we appoint someone tonight, did we vet someone? Did we look at someone? Is there somebody that's, I mean, I know we're going to talk about it, but shouldn't we at least vet someone? I mean, that...
And I'm not saying tonight, I'm saying when we find that person.
Okay, because none of us have discussed any...
Right.
Replacements.
Right. But I think it has to happen sooner versus later.
Okay.
This is, let's face it, we have a crowd here, and there's stuff going around the city, much like the campaign. We've got cowards writing things, not signing them, making lewd phone calls, I mean, making phone calls to people with false data. The same cowards that have been permeating that part of this city, that small group of people who is very vocal, will continue until we get this behind us and move on. I wouldn't doubt that they'll continue in any way, just because that's the way, that's the way that goes. But I think we need, this is a bandage on a wound, we need to pull it and press on. That's my opinion.
Is the 20? You want to say something?
I do, and, you know, I was the one that approached Mike a couple of weeks ago, and we had heart-to-heart talk, and this, I do believe is truly what he wants and proposed. I didn't make any changes to it, I don't know if any other council member did. I didn't get back to him until Monday because I was out of town for the weekend. And we did talk about Section 4 in the contract, and I believe this is the best, this is what he wants, I really do. With that said, I don't see the difference between tonight and two weeks, the city is going to transition no matter what, and I don't see what the difference is going to make, whether it's tonight or in two weeks, so... And as far as the sick leave, he did earn that sick leave under our policy, I'm comfortable, he did come down to half the amount, and I'm comfortable with that.
What you propose, would you be willing to flip it, that an interim, if somebody...
Sure. I would like a transition period. I would like a transition period.
But the city managers stay on, because he, there's things that he signs. I mean, there's bank account, I mean, there's things that have to transition that... No, I'm dead happy.
I'm with you, and I think it would be valuable for the interim person to have that top cover for a while. I'm fine with that.
Lloyd, what do you think? I mean, you...
Again, I was just bringing up...
...accept something in the military...
Just bringing up the option.
Retirement is not, is different.
I would, I support a transition, I see the benefit to it.
Any input?
Well, this is something that, you know, of course, would be discussed in the separation agreement, but if I understand that the council would move with all due speed to identify at least an interim, and there would hopefully be some transition, and at what point would you want me to accept?
I would say the agreement.
I didn't hear, what did you say?
Could I offer a suggestion that I will put together the information that will assist in the transition, because at this point, you don't know how quickly you're going to be able to get someone on board. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's not. If I would, you know, get the necessary house in order for the new individual and take time to work with them, also work with the city attorney to identify the items that we've discussed, that I proposed, and for everyone in the room, this proposal was exclusively from me, as a result of coming to the conclusion that this advance is necessary. So, having said that, my proposal would be to transition after the next meeting and allow me to be on paid leave until July 1st, since I've given back all my vacation and sick leave, and my pension would start July 1st. If that's acceptable, I'd like to put that in the severance agreement.
Well, I have a question, if your life is so hectic here, do you really, as some folks in the audience have said, do you really want to stay for the transition?
I will do whatever the council desires. I think my commitment, that you've observed since you've been on the council, I'm available 24/7 to do this job, I will continue to do it as long as the council desires. I believe in termination, a transition is important, I'm to the point where I believe that is the best course of action. So, if July 1st is the retirement date, because that's clearly what's in ordinance 1054, I will do whatever the council wants between now and July 1st. My suggestion would be to work towards a transition, if you can have the new person onboard anytime between now and, you know, 14 days from today, I will work with that individual, I will have all the information together, because if anyone's ever worked with me and gone through my file system, there's only one person who understands it, and that's me. And so, I need to make it understandable for everyone. And, you know, I'm from the old school, and I see Barbara sitting over there. She kept a lot of my files right before she left and put them all in order for me, and now I can't find anything in those files. But I will put it in manageable form, and I would ask that, if that's indeed the case, since I'm not taking any pay, I will have no sick leave or vacation book, that I remain on the payroll till July, June 3rd, and retire January, or July 1st.
Let me bring it back. What do you think?
I don't, I don't think Mr. Crotty needs to stay for two more weeks. I would like to certainly transition phase, I don't know if it's a few days or however long it might take, but I think the council needs to work diligently to seek out a interim, for however long that takes, and then it's going to require a search committee or a search, not a committee, I don't like committees for those things, to find a permanent, full-time city manager again. So, I would like us to work diligently as a council to seek out applicants for the interim manager as soon as possible, have a special meeting if need be, and get the person in there as soon as possible.
Do you think a transition, and I'm just throwing this out, Scott, to work with an interim city manager, seven days, five days, I mean, because we're talking 10 days?
Well, I have a legal question. If you're getting 20-week severance, don't you need to be available? Not for...
That will, oh, definitely. That will be in...
Yeah, for those 20.
We've talked about that, and it will substantially exceed the 20 weeks. I'm not going anywhere.
I'm not sure what, what does that mean?
Well, we began some initial discussions. I will make myself available at the request, not of the council, but of the new city manager interim, to do whatever I can, and will do...
During that severance period. Yeah, for that period of time.
And I will always be available to the city of Satellite Beach if asked.
Hey, we need some sort of, I would think, can I ask?
Could I just ask that council approve or adopt a motion, or that basically either accepts or does not accept the city manager's proposal, so that at least we have the base to work from for an agreement?
As written?
Correct.
As you have, as we have in front of us?
Correct. If that's agreeable to council, I just, I would just like, before we move on and start talking about the transition stuff in detail, is to deal with the separation agreement.
And this will essentially serve as the basis for my involvement with the separation agreement.
I think the issue is, do, the retirement date and then the two weeks, I think that's in the agreement. We haven't resolved that issue yet.
It's Page 2, first bullet, looks like. At least, it says, ordinance number 1056 would require that once approved on second reading, an application for normal retirement must be submitted within 10 days following the adoption of the ordinance, and the retirement date for selecting this option would be July 1st. That's one.
I think what Councilman Rhodes was asking for was perhaps an earlier date than 1 July.
1 July or 20, or, I think we're looking at 20 June, which would be the second reading, and then 10 days of retirement pay or vacation pay, but not work.
Administrative leave.
Whatever we, the books have, but it would be the next reading.
I'm not sure what the point is, to be honest, I mean, it's a week?
Yeah, it's two.
Just my thought.
So, what's your opinion?
I'm thinking it should be effective immediately with administrative leave, and we appoint someone to be the interim city manager.
I think an important consideration here is the fact that Mr. Crotty said that he'll be available to us, which I think is the primary concern about the transition, is his availability. So...
What are you responsible for that has to be signed?
Well, if you make the appointment of an acting city manager under the terms of the charter, they have the authority that I have.
Well, there's bank accounts and stuff that have your signature card.
We have to do, we have to change those signature cards and those types of things, but that occurs anytime you have transition, you have that transition, if you have a change in the finance director's position, because there are names on the checks also.
One way...
Those are going to occur whether it's February, or June 20th or July 1st. Those can be accomplished.
One way to handle this, to get to what I think you all were talking about, is, let's face it, we have somebody who Mr. Crotty appoints as an acting city manager all the time. We always get those emails when he's going out. So, there's a potential, if we wanted to handle it this way, if we wanted to, you know, to have Mr. Crotty go ahead and depart early, we can appoint Ms. Raver as the acting city manager until we get an interim city manager in place. And like Mr. Crotty said, he'll always be available.
I don't think you could do that, you'd have to appoint her as the interim. That's what the charter says, you have to appoint an interim immediately.
Interim.
So, appoint hers an interim, and then go...
Well, I think we, I guess we need to make a decision on this issue, and then go to the next...
What's the difference between interim and acting?
What is that in the charter?
I...
Sort of a nebulous...
One of the things that we have to look at, and since I have been up here, is what's best for the citizens of Satellite Beach. And I think the world of Brenda, I think the world of Jeff, and everyone else, but I also think that a two-week transition period is not going to be the, will hurt the city, not because of Brenda, I think she can do it, but she also has a very limited financial department with a budget, and the transition, you know, when you are the acting city manager for two or three days, I don't think you get into the nitty-gritty of what's going on in the city. It's just like any of us that are left to sit in the seat for a day or two. I'm not sure what's wrong with the 20th. I know we have a tendency to do things critically and quickly, but I'm not sure what we lose in the next two weeks. And I do hear you, Cheryl, I do hear you, Lloyd, I heard how you started, and then I heard after Ed's comments about retirement, we all had a time to retire. And sometimes they brought someone in, and sometimes we, they did not.
This is discussion, so I want to discuss all points.
I know, you know, I mean, because we start, and then we have some comments, and I think the comments from the audience, I think they were all very good, both sides. I really do. I think we stuck to the topic in the separation agreement, now we're in a really guardian knot. Is that what you said?
If we appoint an interim manager...
If we appoint an interim manager, can it be switched? What if we appointed, say if Ms. Raver was appointed, and a couple of days later, we decide to appoint somebody different? Is that legal for us to do?
I think we-
Until we appoint a full-time, or we hire a full-time manager? We could appoint a different person every day or every week or whatever? I mean, is that legal to do that?
I think what he's getting at is, is it legal by charter, since the charter says interim city manager, not, not, what's the other term that you gave us?
Acting.
If we were to appoint, let's say, Brenda as the interim city manager, and then we found the interim city manager that we wanted to help us for the complete transition, in other words, go look for a full-time city manager, et cetera, et cetera, would that be, would that be in accordance with the charter?
I would say yes. I mean, I don't see why you couldn't do that. Another option arguably would be, depending upon when you wanted Michael to step down, would be to request that he appoint somebody as the acting city manager until something else happens, whether you decide you want to appoint a different acting city manager, or you actually hire the interim city manager.
Oh, my head's spinning.
What does that say, Mike? What do you read?
Let me read it. "Removal of the city manager shall require the affirmative vote of at least four of the five council members. Upon removal, the city council shall immediately appoint an interim city manager and shall appoint a permanent city manager within 180 days."
But does it apply since you're not being removed?
That's what I'm saying, it's not removed.
Does that paragraph even apply?
I would say not. But I mean, but you can use that as a guideline as to what you want to do, but he's not being removed based on what we're talking about.
So if he's not being removed, and that paragraph doesn't apply, then we may not, we may be able to get away initially with an acting city manager.
Correct.
Well, I'm going to be honest, I'm ready to appoint an interim city manager this evening based on someone's qualifications.
That's a discussion to be had, though.
Right, but I'm just saying, we've got to get beyond this discussion, so.
Great.
Well, another option is to say that we'll do it upon the successful appointment of a interim city manager?
Acting or interim?
I'm so confused.
Both options are still on the table, whether it's acting or interim. But if Councilwoman Deenan has perhaps, you know, someone in mind that we don't know about or haven't discussed.
Can we just, can I go, just transition back? Let's talk separation agreement. Are we, the city attorney has asked, are we in concert with it the way it is presented by the city manager, except for the date?
I mean, I'm talking about the financial and the ordinance and those kinds of things, not this particular thing that we're talking about right now.
I want to know, I think that that, at least we can get that off the table, and then we can talk about transition.
I think it's- We don't need a transition statement in there? Because if we do, we could use a generic statement, which is, you know, you will transition upon successful appointment of an interim city manager whenever that happens. Is that acceptable?
Go with that one again.
We can, if we need to have a transition line in there, we can say, we can make a generic line that says that the transition will be effective, not the retirement, the retirement will be 1 July, but the transition will be effective upon the successful appointment of a interim city manager. And it could be two weeks, it could be a day, it could be three weeks. I mean, that covers the bases, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. And would that commit the city manager then to work with the interim? Not commit, but then you would work with the interim city manager?
I think that's already in. He's going to do that. He's, I've already talked to him about-
That's in here, Jim? Is that in here?
That's not, that will be in the severance agreement. That's one of the things that I've already talked to him about, as to whether or not he would agree to do that, and he's already indicated he would. The issue is how many months, but, you know, it looks like it's going to be at least a minimum of six months, if that's something the council is agreeable to.
Say that sentence again. And where do you embed that?
I think it goes, well, I don't know. I think it goes down by if ordinance number 1056 approved my retirement date will be July 12th, and then we can have a second line there or an added line there that says, "Transition date will be, will be effective upon successful appointment of interim city manager."
And I could ask if you would consider that I, if I was on administrative leave at that point, to be paid till June 30th?
Yeah, I think that, yeah. Would that have to be in there? Because it says your retirement is July 1st.
That's included.
Transition date.
That might be advantageous, rather than making a decision tonight. Let whomever you appoint as the interim determine what level of support and advice they would need from me. I'm available to accommodate any requests.
Okay, I mean, just basically what I wrote down is, "Transition date will be upon the appointment of interim manager," and I did write, "Payment will be until June 30th." I put both of those in. That is a request of the city manager. Is that?
That pay be in vacation pay?
Well, I put all my vacation time to that, so it would be administrative.
Administrative, it'd be administrative leave.
What kind of vote do we need for this?
To authorize the city attorney to prepare the severance agreement based upon that fact. And if the transition takes prior to that, I'd leave, well, it doesn't matter, we'll have a different agreement.
What kind of vote of the council? Is it a supermajority vote?
No.
Okay. Mike, you okay with that?
I am.
So it would be, transition date would be effective upon the appointment by the council of an interim city manager. Payment will be until June 30th, July 30th?
30th, my retirement date will be July 1.
And again, just to, so I'm clear, if the council somehow comes up with a candidate or candidates or something, and wants to call a special meeting and appoint an interim manager before the June 20th, that's the option.
That would be, right. All right, so let's, I guess have a motion in a second.
Did you write anything down?
I can't read my writing.
We'll probably have to amend this, but I would like to make a motion to accept, to approve ordinance 1056.
No, we already did that.
Oh, that's already?
It's done.
Well, I didn't know we needed to amend it.
It'll be included in-
I would like to make a motion to accept the separation agreement as discussed with a departure date concurrent with the appointment of an interim city manager with paid administrative leave for the city manager through the 30th of June 2012, with a retirement effective 1 July 2012.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman French, second by Vice Mayor Rhodes. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deenan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman French?
Yes.
Mayor Ferrante?
I know I've worked it. I cannot, I cannot agree. I say no. But the motion passes four to one. Thank you. Okay, let's turn the page and talk transition issues. Okay, Cheryl, you did, I've heard one name. I've heard possible, possible, I haven't heard anybody, but you said that you might have someone.
Yes, if you want me to start?
Sure, let's talk transitions.
Okay, transition. And I've thought long and hard about this, and being a former municipal employee, it's important, especially during this time of year, that we continue to move forward. And with that said, we have recently signed an agreement with Calvin Giordano, who not only has a community redevelopment directors on their staff, but they also have former city managers on their staff. So I'm going to recommend that we consider Richard Sala as our interim city manager from Calvin Giordano.
Richard is present tonight?
Yes, he is.
I knew that, Richard. I just didn't say. All right, anybody else?
Thanks.
I would like to put out a name, since you mentioned Brenda, but not Brenda. My name is, that I would like to put in for the running, for the vetting, is Chief Pearson. I know Jeff very well. I don't, actually don't know him that well, but I know that Jeff has a master's in public administration that he got recently from Webster, and public administration is the daddy rabbit of all degrees if you want to be in city management. He owns one-seventh of the budget, about $1.2 million. He's been in the city since he's been 18 years old. He has aspired a satellite high graduate. He lives here, he works here, he loves it here. He could transition. He would have to appoint a chief, possibly from within, but I think he's very well-suited. Nothing, you know, and I'd like to vet Richard, too. I've talked to Richard. I think he's, I think he's doing a great job on the CRA. But my input, I really think very highly of Jeff. I think his, one of his goals is possibly to get into city management, and hence the degree from Webster. I've talked to him a little bit. I have not asked if he'd want to do that. I haven't, I haven't asked him, and we haven't asked Richard either. So it's not one of those things, but that, but he is, I think, a premier player. And is there anyone else?
I would like to, and I've talked to Richard, and the point was to have him take us through the advertising process so that, and the selection process until we hire a permanent city manager, not, not to be, you know, not to become the city manager. So just take us through the process because he's-
Interim.
Yeah, interim.
Okay. Lloyd, can you think of any? You mentioned Brenda.
I mentioned Brenda. I don't know if Brenda would want to do it, but again, I didn't talk to you before that, just like you didn't talk to Jeff, so I hate to put her on the spot. But I think Brenda would have the same issues long-term that I think Jeff would probably have with having to run his own department and what have you. So, but those are issues we can get into. I am not putting Brenda up for the long-term interim.
Yeah, I wouldn't put-
I think she'd be an outstanding short-term interim one if we need to.
I wouldn't put Jeff up. Jeff would have to make a decision, but, and Richard, too.
Do we want to hear a person's name?
Let's see, can I add any more names? I asked somebody in town here. They're unavailable. They got a full-time thing, and they couldn't devote enough time to it. I think, I think as a council, we should have people, let it be known that we're looking for an interim manager. I've done a little research. Other cities have done that, and they have people come to them saying, hey, I could step in as an interim manager, talk to some people, make sure we're comparing apples to apples. And if it takes a couple of days or a couple of weeks, whatever, Mr. Carradi is still going to be running things, I guess, until that decision's made, and at least we-
Or that's how we could use Brenda. We could use Brenda for that period of time. I mean, that's a possibility.
But to get, to get some more people, there's certainly some people in the area or maybe out of the area that would be willing to come for short-term and help us out with that transition.
What I see is this is a very short string, that we have to act relatively quickly. What would you think, if tonight's Wednesday, that we do something by Monday?
Can we put an advertisement in the newspaper? We're looking for interim manager?
No, this is an appointment. It's just not a, yeah.
You, I know Cocoa Beach, I know Cape Canaveral, it wasn't interim, but city manager, and I can't remember if Rocky told me 100 or 200 applicants. I think Rocky, do you remember? Rocky said-
For interim, interim or full-time?
They were looking for full-time. They promoted the clerk, city, or they moved the city clerk, and then eventually hired the city clerk.
And you've got to remember, this is an interim, and what I envision and what I'm hearing back from the community is they want somebody to hit the count running, get us through the budget process, and someone with managerial, city managerial experience, so.
Well, I think another requirement, especially given the state of this community right now, I would suggest that another requirement would be somebody with no political affiliations either way. And that, to me, means somebody from the outside. Because, you know, you bring somebody in, one side, so to speak, is going to, you know, grinch and moan. You bring somebody in from the other side, that side's going to grinch and moan. So maybe to salve and calm the waters, maybe we need somebody that is completely politically not connected to the city of Satellite Beach.
If, I see one person, Richard, I, it would be, it would be good to get either, you know, I know Richard has been a city manager, I'm not sure where, how many people, how long. I mean, we should at least have that on a, either a resume or in a verbal. Because I'd like to know that. I'd like to know what, yeah, I want to make sure that we're okay with the three names that are on the table. Are there more than three names available?
Any volunteers?
What Scott's saying is, we should ask the community, not just-
That's the whole process, that's the selection process, so we don't have time to do that. And that was the point.
That may involve a headhunter.
Yeah. So you're really just looking for an interim to keep, to keep the momentum going and to get us through that process.
And that brings up another point. If, not only the political disconnection I think we need, but the other experience, I think, that whoever we pick should come to the table with, is experience in finding permanent city managers. I think that'd be good, because I think we would want that person to be helping us do that, as an adjunct duty. So who's that leave?
I do have one name. We're going to open this for public opinion. Mr. Sala, though, would you mind coming to the podium so we can get a short background of your history?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity and for the invitation. I don't know where to start. I guess one gentleman back here talked about the vision of someone coming off a ship and the new guy going up. In the city manager field, Mike and I would see it more as one on one gang plank and one walking the plank on the other. So that's just the way it goes sometimes. It's kind of funny, because I've been in that situation and have been part of the transitions and-
Can we have his name?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought they went on the record.
Mr. Sala, Richard Sala.
Richard Sala. I'm with Calvin Giordano Associates. I'm currently your redevelopment department and executive director. Our firm does-
Are you a resident?
I'm non-resident.
Go ahead, sir. All right, we'll see, we'll get the resume. Go ahead.
Basically, I have some- Basically, I have some information that I had passed out originally when you interviewed me and the company several months ago. So I'll be happy to share some of that, and maybe it might answer some of your questions, and I can possibly use it as an outline.
Thank you. Do you have one to make a copy of?
Never mind.
Okay. You're going to look on that?
I will share it.
Please excuse my voice, it's a little, a little hoarse right now. Basically, the first page covers a company profile in there. As you can see, among all our governmental services, we also include public administration and the human resources executive recruitment, which are the two things that you just brought up recently on there. The next page has my resume, and I can highlight a couple of those things there that you brought up. I have a 25-year background in public administration. I am a credentialed city manager with the International City Managers Association. I currently, one of the cities I manage was the city of North Waterdale, Florida, approximately 48,000 in population. We had 350 employees, and I had a 100, $122 million budget plus a capital budget. I also managed the water management district and also was the superintendent for a charter school in that city. So we had quite, quite a big responsibilities there. I spent five years there, five years as their assistant city manager, and I was also the executive director for redevelopment in Hollywood. And basically, that position reported directly to the mayor and council, so it was an executive position. And, and in that case there, I actually had seven members that I reported to in the executive position, had my own budget and everything. So I have a lot of experience in that. In addition to working my way up, I was growth management director, I worked in the planning department, and have background in both the redevelopment and the public administration. I know some of the challenges and things that the city is looking for. I've been able to work with Mike for the past several months, and he's shared some of those things. I'm sure there's a lot others that need to be looked at and reviewed. I also feel that Mike is the, the right individual that, to work with in a transition. City managers like myself and Mike, we pride ourselves in those accomplishments we do in those cities. It's something we walk away and always want to look back, and our families look back. I have many of those milestones in my previous positions that I still go back and I show my daughter. I think Mike has that same type of character, where he has done a lot here, and, and he wants to, if this is his time to move on, he wants to move on right so that this always is a part of his life. So I look forward to working with him in that transition, should you choose. I've also have experience in dealing with the public safety sector, working with your police chief and your fire chief. I've also supervised and negotiated three different unions, general employees, firefighters, and police unions, and also established a grouping of outsourcing with the municipalities that I work with. Supporting me in the role will be George Keller, who you also met here at the initial meeting. George was also a former city manager. And Jeff Oris, who is your current redevelopment coordinator. Jeff was also assistant city manager, and will assist with any overlap or anything that we need to do. The next page is kind of a scope outline. Basically, the issues that were brought up by the council are covered in there. Everything from supervision to budget, financial, and other duties and meetings that you specify. The next page is a little bit of a methodology.
What page, a, a, you on scope of work or methodology? Okay.
Yeah, the scope, one before.
I was following-
And I'm sorry, if I'm going too fast, please slow me down, I'm trying to maximize my voice here. Basically, Mike can tell you I'm familiar with your charter, the actual budget I've reviewed. I also have a copy of the financial statements and the organizational chart, which I'm actually working with Mike to come up with some recommendations for your budget hearings coming up next month. I do have a working knowledge of the city. As Councilman, Councilwoman Deenan put, hit the ground running, and if there's anything I can do to help, let us know. We'll be happy to have that. But I know it's a big decision, I know there's many other issues out there, but I appreciate the opportunity to at least offer where we might be able to help.
All right. Sure, let me bring it back to the council and see if we have some questions.
I have one, one closing item. If you, if you go to the second to last page, you'll see executive search. And in there, it's a little bit of a breakdown on the process of what you need to do to put yourself in a position to find the qualities that you're looking for, for that next city manager, that you want to have a long-term relationship with the city, looking at the big-picture ideas, the city challenges, and then actually bringing those down to a point where those are the qualities you're looking for, go through the proper advertising process, and then bringing you a list of candidates that, that work the best for the residents, the city as a whole. I would not be interested in the permanent position. I, I am very comfortable with dealing with governmental services. I put my tenure in as city manager and have done that. I'm happy to help and be in an interim, but I would not be interested in anything permanent, so therefore, there would be no conflict or, or any type of inside. I would be from the outside, just helping you through the process and advising you. It's actually going to be your decision and residents' input. Okay?
Questions?
Mr. Sala, what experience do you have in actually recruiting city managers?
Well, we've spent, our firm has worked with an associate, his name is Herb Marlowe. He works strictly with councils. You may know him through the League of Cities, and he assists us with all the executive search. We have a department that is human resources, with a human resources director that will assist with that. For a city this size, you're looking at putting together an advertisement and a salary range and advertising probably throughout the state. There may be some ICMA periodicals you could put in to go national search. Those are all things that you're going to need to fine-tune when you meet with the facilitator to start pulling together what type of advertising you need. But it's something that should not be very complicated to do.
So have you, Mr. Sala, actually done an executive search before?
I have worked with Herb Marlowe on executive searches. He's the one you're going to be with first.
So your company has done it?
Absolutely, and our firm has done executive searches. I personally have hired, in my role as city manager, I have gone through and hired assistant city managers, department heads, police chiefs, fire chiefs. I've done all that also.
And then, you know, the elephant in the room, I looked at the fee schedule.
Mm-hmm.
If you're getting paid that money, I wouldn't want to go be a permanent city manager either. I don't want that. So, I mean, obviously, there's no way we can pay you $195 for an eight-hour day, and I, you know, for, until we find a permanent manager. So, you know, that, to me, that'd be a limp back to start with. What would be, you know, how do you see that? Would you expect $195 for eight hours every day?
So you want me to give away all my secrets, even though I may be competing against other people later on, right?
I would think, I would think that we would, if, you know, depending on who was selected, that a contract would have to be developed.
I have, I have a question, though. We have an existing contract. Would you honor that price that's in the contract already? I can't find it.
Okay, we have an existing contract with the city and with the CRA. We have a dual contract signed by both. Yes, we would, you're talking about for, would we honor the negotiated price for this, for the services you're talking about?
It's, it's, I have a copy of their contract here that we already signed.
Oh, the CRA contract?
Yeah, that's at 165.
I know, that's a, that says here, that's 165, I think.
That's correct, yes.
An hour?
Yeah, an hour, but that's my sticky point. I mean, that's a lot of money for an eight-hour day. And how many eight-hour days would you, I mean, would you suspect you're going to work seven days a week, five days a week?
Well, I, I think the key here is to find the right amount of time that you need to get through the transition, and then, of course, supervise the city and administer the city until you get your permanent city manager.
Right.
I think the biggest point would be to empower those department heads to group under this and rise up to the occasion to help everyone administer their divisions and their parts in this, and have a, a former city manager come in and help oversee that and work with them and guide them through the agenda items, the budget and things like that. I would foresee right now, working three, eight-hour days to start, maybe Tuesday through Thursday.
So it's not full-time? That's what I was getting at.
And then the rest would be around there, but the key would be to empower the department heads to really be part of that and not just be a huge cost. And I think that can be done. I think the opportunity is now there for everyone to, to move in that direction. So that would be just one strategy with, trying to answer your question, and, and Councilwoman Deenan, your question about the pricing, we did negotiate a, the price on the redevelopment contract, and we would, we'd be happy to honor that.
And I think some of the savings that we maybe didn't count on is, we wouldn't be contributing to retirement or 401, you know, and life insurance, social security, all those other things, because those would be covered under, I guess, his company?
That's correct.
All right, I, do you have the salary from the CRA con, I mean, just some, some quick-
If you go to the price sheet-
Great.
On the third to last page, and you go down to redevelopment in the first column, you'll see revitalization, that's 165.
We certainly need to look at something. 165 an hour is about, oh, I have like 4,000 to 5,000 a week, which is 20,000 a month, which is 240,000 a year. It's, it's costly.
Yeah.
That is, that is, I mean, just, just really, really a quick, basic, and that's just three days a week. That's why I think, if we could, no, I understand that you would be leaving these figures if hired to come here for the transition, three months, four months.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
No, that you would be leaving what you do with the CRA.
I, I would juggle part of that, but then you, we still have other staff that you've met that would be handling the CRA responsibilities.
Correct. Okay, that's what I had. Your availability, I did read it here, Richard, is at our request, is that right? Or I mean that, would you, would you, and that's what I'd like to see a contract, would housing be involved? Because I know that you live in, in the south.
No, it's under, under the-
Or mileage?
No, we would, we would include that all in our fee. So there would be lodging for two, three nights a week or whatever, and then I would train, I would drive, but our prices include all those, the overhead.
Mr. Crotty, can you put the number? What's, what's a more realistic number? We know what your salary is and your, and those type of things. What's realistic that it costs the city every year for you to be employed as, as the city manager? Is it closer to 200,000 a year with the benefits and the different compensations that we-
That attachment, the 170 plus the, the retirement, which, you know, it would not come into play. So 170 is on an annualized basis. As, you know, as I pointed out in the memo that I sent out, that, that is a year's snapshot of what it costs for me as city manager to provide the services. So-
You say that doesn't include retirement or not?
Does not.
So if you included retirement, what's your, what's the full, full FTE?
And it's large because of the defined benefit, and it's a closed plan, and it's based on a percentage of salary. When you only have eight employees in a plan and you need X amount of dollars and you only have eight employees, the percentage is high.
Right. I think, though, what he's trying to get a sense of is, you know, apples to apples. So if we took your 170 plus your retirement, is that even close to what they're, they're saying? If we go three days a week or something?
You know, it could approximate 220,000 with the retirement. You can divide that by 2,080 hours a year, so that it's $100 an hour.
Can I, can I ask Richard another question?
Sure.
We have a budget hearing. What, what actually is it?
No, because you can sit right there, okay. Thank you.
Try and answer.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. He said, we had a budget hearing. You're going to recommend canceling that?
I'm going to recommend canceling it.
Well, I was-
I'll fill in the council-
Okay. I was just going to ask what your availability would be.
For when?
And I guess you're going to-
Well, there's, but we have the meeting date posted. I mean, so if you're available and it's posted, the meeting tomorrow night.
There's a budget hearing tomorrow night?
And should you elect to move forward with this, then I will rearrange so that I be available tomorrow night and not, not leave, I'll stay. It's tomorrow, it's six?
Six o'clock tomorrow.
Yes. I would, I would make every effort to be there, yes.
And then, what is your availability if you, to start, to start, start?
Probably the earliest would be next Tuesday, coming for, kind of doing the cycle we spoke about, Tuesday to Thursday, to get through the transition.
I think that's all I have.
Doing math in public, which isn't my strong suit, but if I, if, if you said your average you think is going to be about three days a week, as an average, 16 weeks, so four months, works out to 63, 360, I believe.
Plus expenses.
No, he said expenses were included.
We, we would, you know, rather than do math like this, I would, we should have some solid figures.
Oh, yeah. I'm just trying to get a-
You could, you know, some sort of, some sort of contract of what would be involved and for the time.
Well, we have a contract.
That, is that, I don't think-
If I remember correctly, when they presented, they said they have a menu of items and you just pick from those items. So the contract is in place.
We're going to, are we going to use the CRA contract for the interim city manager?
I think it's signed by this, I think it's by, signed by this, it's, it's signed by the city and the CRA.
If I may, Mayor, if you remember when we, when we approved it, because there were going to be funds spent out of the CRA and funds out of the city budget-
Right, right.
We, we agreed that the, it would be a joint. So Mr. Crotty signed as your city manager, and then I think you signed as the CRA chair, so that we have both parties, because there were some assignments in there that included work for the city also, so the, the contract did embellish that.
Jim, let me ask you, if, just put you on the spot, is the contract as-is valid for this?
I can't answer that. I mean, I haven't looked at it since it was approved, and I don't remember everything that was in it.
I think we could do something for-
Somebody could give me a copy of it, I could look at it, but.
Do you want to take, do you want to, I, I don't want you to go through, I, it's about 10, 10 pages. Why don't we take a, till eight, and then come back, and then you can fill us in on that? Would that be all right? Mike, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
That's not enough stuff here. Can we take a break?
All right, we're going to take a break till eight o'clock.
Well, I, I, well, no, I, I think this hits all of the requirements. I mean, it, it hits the, you know, not, there's, there's no tie-in to any sort of, you know, political thing, and he definitely has experience, all that kind of stuff. But what I'm concerned about is the cost, and what I'm also concerned about is the, is the ceiling. You know, what, when do we stop spending money? Now, you know, to a certain extent, we're going to be saving some because we won't be paying Mike's salary after the beginning of, after one July. So, so that makes up for some of that. But at what point do we stop spending 165 a year?
Mike, are all those funds come from general fund, or is this, does the CRA pay for any of the plan?
The CRA is paying for most of that contract, almost.
Most of that contract, but in, in a new contract would be general fund?
General fund.
General fund, okay, 63,000 of general fund.
How much would your salary be in a, in a four-month period? What would your salary be, Mike? What would your salary be, Mike?
Four-month period? My base salary is 126, so divide that by four, you know, 30, 30,000, 30,000.
Okay, plus then the rest of the FTE requirement, so that's about, you're about a, what, about a 1.7 or something like that? 1.6, 1.7?
Yeah, oh, yes.
So that's 36,000.7, 40, 28, that's about 60, it's about 64. It's about the same, so.
But it's five days.
Yeah, it's five days a week.
And it's fully overtime that you could fit into one week. I mean, it really is. You okay with public comment?
Yeah.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open up transition issues for a public comment. I have one, do you want to go first? And then Ed? Okay. Kathleen?
Kathleen Arcorilla, Satellite Avenue. I just, I know we need to have an interim person. I just think we're kind of rushing it a little bit. In my opinion, Ms. Barber should do it for the next one day, two days, three days, two weeks. She is trained as an acting city manager. Is it that, who's that?
Brenda?
Brenda. Ms. Brenda, excuse me. She is trained to do that in the event that Mr. Crotty has a family crisis or wins Lotto or, you know, God forbid, passes away or goes on vacation or something like that. What would we do, you know, if all of a sudden, boom, we didn't have a city manager? So I think we should allow her to act in that role until things calm down a little bit. We've been through a lot tonight, and you guys find a good interim person. I think Richard here is very astute and experienced and all that, but I don't have a comfortable feeling because he's already involved in our CRA stuff. Now he's going to be involved in this other thing. Plus, he has an intimate working relationship with Mr. Crotty, and although he lives out of town, he already knows our dirty laundry and knows everything, and he's not really virgin on this matter, you know? And like you said, we want to bring an interim person in that's more in a virgin status so they can train the permanent city manager that we're going to have. I think he's a little overqualified for what we need, but like when Mr. Billman was doing the math, I was doing it, it's almost $4,000. It's 13,020 a day times three days a week is four grand. And you know it's going to get tweaked a little bit here and there. You guys are good, but Dan, you're expensive. So I also want Jeff to stay where he is, Chief Jeff, because we need him there, and I wouldn't like to see him come over to city manager. One, he knows the intimacies of everything too much, and I want to stay away from the good old boy thing, and I think he's excellent at what he does, and I would like to retain him there. I think, again, we still need to stick with, we need somebody that's kind of fresh and not already in the recipe. So that's my, that's how I feel about that. I think we need to take a little bit of time, whether it be one to three days or something, and try to come out. I don't think we have anything to lose, and I think Ms. Brenda will probably do a perfectly good job as she has in the past when she's been called up to stand in.
She has.
Thank you.
Ed?
Ed Kenberg, resident. I agree 100% with the previous speaker, and I would go a step further. I think it's an absolute mistake to hire somebody on an hourly rate. I work at an hourly rate, it's higher, higher than his rate is. And when you give estimates, I mean, I'd be glad to take the job too for that. I know it. 30 hours, 24 hours a week of guaranteed pay, good stuff. But the bottom line is, all we can give as consultants and professionals is estimates. It's not eight hours, three days a week. It's midnight calls, it's bringing in other people. Like, he mentioned that other people from the firm would be doing some of the work. He could be here on his Tuesday, somebody else would be working on the executive search at 165 dollars an hour, and we have no control over the bill. Given the length of time involved, I think Mr. Sal is eminently qualified. I don't mean to be insulting to you, sir. You know, if I had needed somebody that could afford it, I'd hire him. I'd hire me first. But if we're going to do something with it, first of all, Brenda, now I'm going to get the name messed up, because is eminently qualified, and that is her job right now, and within her job description, to step into the shoes of the city manager when there's an emergency. She's the next in command. Let her do her job while the city council does its job and calmly deliberates on how. Have a special meeting next week and figure out how to address it. Let some people throw their names in the hat, have a long city council, a special meeting focused just on this issue. And if Mr. Sal was to put in a fixed-price proposal to do this for two weeks, three weeks, six weeks, we don't even have a duration right now. We know it's going to be up to 180 days, because that's what you have to have in person. Let him put in a fixed-price proposal and tell people we want fixed-price proposals. And if his company wants to say, I'll do whatever it takes to serve your needs for $4,000 a week for six weeks, and we decide that's reasonable, and given his expertise, it may very well be reasonable, that's fine. But I don't like to have an hourly rate. It has too much of an ability to go sideways on us, and that's basically where I'm at.
I appreciate your comments tonight, Ed. Ed?
Skip Bollinger, resident. I understand the need for moving quickly on this and getting somebody on. I'm just feeling that, again, no personal disrespect, but I believe that the CGA people are the wrong ones to hire for this, okay? For a couple of reasons. Unless I missed it, sense of counsel when we hired them, the primary reason was to sunset the CRA, to figure out how to get the debt satisfied and to spool the thing down and bury it, okay? Next thing we know, here they are having meetings with a bunch of us citizens soliciting input about what new projects would you like to see your CRA do for you, okay? I believe that at the time we needed to hire demolition experts, we hired new construction contractors, okay? That's what these people do. They sell municipalities on all the wonderful things that can be done with CRAs without ever explaining the downside, such as the debt we now find ourselves in, okay? I think also, now, in addition, they were hired for some side jobs to assist Mr. Crotty, who was understaffed, and I can, I got no problem with that, and also, I believe, to provide assistance to some of the department heads on administrative stuff. I got no problem with that at all. But on the CRA thing, if, I'll go back to my question that I asked in a previous meeting, if the city decides to sue the CRA, or the CRA decides to sue the council, the city, who gets Mr. Beetle? These people would also have a conflict of interest in that event. And one more thing, they went to great lengths to explain to us what some of us who've done our homework already knew, that according to Florida Statute 163, you cannot do anything in a CRA that's not in the original CRA plan. Now, I understand that their consulting services are being paid for by the CRA. Were their consulting services allowed for in the original CRA plan when it was devised? My questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Vic?
You know, this is a really, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Vic Brungart, non-resident right now, but I've been a resident of Satellite Beach. We came here in 98, and I was on the fire department, the police department, spent a lot of time volunteering in here. And ladies and gentlemen of the council, I love Satellite Beach. I really do. I wouldn't be here tonight if I didn't love Satellite Beach. It's a fun city to live in. And I was just going out to the men's room, and I saw in 1961, and I just wrote it down, Bob Moser, Dick Irvine, Reggie Leonard, Tom McLean, Wile E. White, most of all Percy Hitchcock were here in 61. And I tell you, I've been on these municipal things in Texas, and Jersey, and Virginia, and here, and I ran for and was beating a four-term incumbent for the House of Delegates, I'm sorry, in Virginia, when Mom decided to come here. And I sit here tonight, this is D-Day, I believe. I think this, wasn't it June 6? And I'm thinking of D-Day, and I'm thinking of all of the battles that were won by 17- and 18-year-old people. We have people in the military all around here in the community, and I'm thinking, just let me give you a little background here. I'm thinking, you know, let's look about moving forward with a culture change, and we've got a different culture now than we've had in a while. And the thing that I think I would like for everybody to go away tonight with is, we've got now a bunch of people on council that are working together, trying to hash out little details and all like that. We got a great guy. Mike Crotty has been here, what, 27 years, 35, a long time, and whatever it is, and he's a great guy. And he's going out, and we got somebody else coming in. But I'd like for us to take what I call the 35,000-foot view, because I'm a pilot, and I love to fly above, just look down. We're doing good stuff here tonight, and above all the little nitpicking stuff and all, what's going on here is great. Now, personally, I mean, I could do this job myself, but I'm not going to be in this because I'm looking at the county level. I'm probably going to run for the next commission seat, District 4, at the county level. I just know the county very well, and I love it, 550,000 people here, and I love the county. But that's background to say this. I like to, one of the things I did when I was in private business was boil down all the arguments down to really two things, and let me just get right to that right now.
Right to transition.
Just let me get to the final thing. You got the possibility of Brenda coming on for a little while, doing her thing, and then you have a really competent guy. I mean, Richard's obviously very competent. So if I were sitting on the council, I'd say, what do I do? One thing I don't like...
Excuse me, Speaker, your three minutes are up.
Oh, okay, thanks. I'd keep Brenda.
Other comments? Sir, in the back.
There's an old saying in the military, if you want it bad, you're going to get it bad. You have one night to think about this whole thing, don't rush into a decision. In the military, you have a commanding officer and an executive officer. Commanding officer and the executive officer. Commanding officer steps down, or gets hurt, the executive officer takes over and runs it until you can come up with a new commanding officer. That's what I'm suggesting. Take a step back, think about what you want to do. Do I think we should hire outside count? No, don't spend the money. I think we need to use the XO. You guys can take a step back and do what you're, vote it into, make the right decision for the city.
Thank you. Michelle?
Michelle French, resident. I think we've got a couple of options here, and I'm not sure that they've all been explored. One of them, I don't know that I would go so far to say absolutely we don't want CGA or Richard to do the job. I also think that maybe it needs to be presented that maybe the, a contract be drawn up specifically for this and a price negotiated for this, a fixed amount, whatever it may be. I think that if you need time to think, I would, I believe Brenda's quite capable of handling this interim position, and maybe it would be an interim of an interim position in which you had time to investigate and maybe, you know, present something to Richard, whether his company or he is willing to renegotiate a type of contract. But I also think that there is some attributes that CGA has that is, that can take us long-term down the right road as far as finding a new city manager, and I think that you need to keep in your mind. Maybe a contract is negotiated so that he takes over after Brenda or at some point in time, you know, in the not-too-distant future, and then also carries us through to get someone competent hired. I don't think it's a very narrow, I think we have to look at this more broadly. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
You know, I was watching you guys up here, and I think it was Councilman Billman threw out the number 195, and I thought he said a day, and said, hire the guy right now. Well, that changed quickly. What I did see here is Mr. Sal put out a number, 160 bucks an hour, 165 an hour, and nobody, you guys are doing numbers up here and adding them up, but nobody's negotiating. That tells me he'll work for 165 an hour. Okay, look, we'll get a little extra, have a job for 90 bucks an hour, what do you want to do? I mean, it's just totally ludicrous to think that somebody come in and throw you out there hourly rate without negotiating it. So I certainly wouldn't go down that road tonight and be hasty. I agree with the previous speakers. And to what I said earlier, I wouldn't be hasty in this decision, but it is something we need in interim city manager. Mr. Crotty has indicated, you know, showing a lot of class and a lot of sincerity in that what he would do to help us through this period. And I think Mr. Pearson, I thought he heard, and I may not have heard, I thought he says, I'm out, or I'm opt-in out. I don't blame him. But that being said, currently, to my knowledge, City Hall is vastly understaffed. I don't think we have an administrative, or maybe we do, I don't know. But I do know that Brenda Raver has interfaced with the city manager. She knows quite a bit about that job. As someone that knows where all the money goes, I think she probably knows a whole lot about more of what's going on in the city than most anybody here. If she is willing and able to step into that interim position, I would suggest that you provide that opportunity. It's in-house, it's relatively painless, but at the same time, with all these issues that have come up since this transition, K-PAG and JP, I don't know, you just keep on naming acronyms, and you guys are wanting numbers, well, guess who has to generate those numbers? Finance director or the assistant finance director. So the work gets pushed down. So if she accepts another position, more work's going to get pushed down. So my gut feeling is that if you're going to do it, do it in-house, offer Brenda the opportunity, but then offer her also the opportunity to hire somebody, take up some of the slack that is not going to get taken up otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Dana?
Dana Billman, resident. Wasn't really going to say anything, but I started thinking about it. I'm not sure, I mean, Mike said he would be here, and he's on administrative leave. Why is that any different than vacation or any other type of leave or out of the office? Why could he not be doing whatever he's doing and Brenda be acting city manager while you take the four or five days that you think you need to put together or work through or negotiate a contract? I do believe that is very important. Some of the things I liked about CGA is I definitely think we need a professional organization. When we started, the city was this bucolic little, everybody-tells-me-bedroom community, so we had a group of citizens that went out, did a search, and found someone who obviously performed very well. He was able to do it for 27 years, but we are not, they've taken our city, that is not our city today. We've gone from this little tiny thing into something that's a large entity that's very vibrant, has lots of things happening. We have issues, we have all these things. I think we need something more professional to help us go from this level to the next level. And they obviously offer all those services. They have experience doing that. They can answer the questions that, I don't know that the people in this room know the answer to, and a lot of people don't have the time. I mean, everybody's doing research and stuff. There's only so much you can do. So I like having someone of that caliber that will be there to help us and take us on to the next thing. I think it's very beneficial that he has been in the city, he has, you know, interacted with everyone, he has working relationships with all of our department heads, obviously has a working relationship with our city manager and attorney. I think those are very important. So if we want someone hitting the ground running, I mean, it's not like he's walking in and doesn't know anything. He obviously knows what's happening, and he knows what he's getting into. So I don't know, but I do like to fix rate contract or something that says, these are kind of the services you're going to provide. I think that's very important. So I don't know, I don't know that we need to rush into it, but I also think that, you know, we can spin our wheels and everything, doing this massive job search to find someone that's going to be very temporary, and we just need someone in there that can do the job, that gets us through. Our department heads run the city, basically, in their departments. I mean, they obviously report to our city manager, but, you know, they should know what's going on. They should be able to pick up... They should be able to pick up the things, run their departments, keep their people going, and sort of act as, you know, it's a team effort, and they all should be as a team, and all of our city employees should be as a team. And guess what? Right now, the coaches is out of the game, and so the team has to step up and do what they know to do. They're all professionals. I have a feeling they'll all do what they're supposed to do. So I don't think we're, we should be all nervous that, oh, my goodness, everybody's floundering, and I don't expect anyone to flounder. So that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close public comment on transition and bring it back to the council for decisions, discussion.
Well, I'll start. One thing I do have to say is I disagree that CGA was hired just to pay down the debt and sunset the CRA. That's just a misstatement. That's not what we hired them to do. And again, this is an interim position, and we have a limited time to get the goal accomplished. And I was going to ask Richard a question. He said he could be here for three days, and I was wondering if he would do the three days fixed amount, and then, of course, if there's an acting, the other two days, of course, would you be accessible to them for phone calls?
Let me understand the question. You want to take the three days and convert that to a fixed fee based on the--
The three days and then--
--fee schedule?
Yeah.
And then the rest would be--
You know, if the department, the acting needed you that day, because you're obviously, you're going to assign duties to them--
Right.
--while you're not here, and when you come back, you expect them to be done and have your staff meetings and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think there's going to be overlap where I would be available, and there'll be many situations where it's not billable and things like that. So I think it's going to be an experiment as we go along. Obviously, if it just turns out to be way over, I'm going to come back and address you and say, look, it's just not, you know, working that way. But I have confidence in the department heads that they're going to be able to run the city. So I think it's just a matter of managing and keeping them, you know, working in the goals of the policy decisions and the agendas and the budget, and I think you have some great people here.
Thank you. Lloyd?
Well, I think--
One other thing, wait, before I lose my train of thought. Also, too, I'm looking at his professional fee schedule, and city management administration is at 195, so we did negotiate down to the rate that's in the existing contract. So to say that there was no negotiation here is not true at all.
I think Mr. Sal's qualifications are certainly, they certainly qualify to meet what our immediate needs are. In my humble opinion, they seem a bit gold-plated. I think the department heads are perfectly capable of taking us from where we are and moving us along for the near term until we come up with, you know, perhaps other alternatives to an interim city manager. When Mr. Crotty and I talked over the weekend, and also discussions with Chief Pearson this evening, it appears to me that the budget is, the initial budget is basically ready for submission.
It is in phenomenal shape for the beginning of the discussion.
Right.
We are at the point of where we normally are at in the third week of July.
Based on what your committee did?
Well, you know--
Based on--
They were partnered with the K-PAG, and--
Where's Andy?
It has gone really well.
So with that in mind, perhaps, perhaps an hourly rate where we just, if we need to pick somebody's brain, that would be an acceptable solution at $165 an hour. But I would think that at the point where we are in the process now, it may not be as excessive of a cost as we perhaps imagine.
What do you propose?
I think that, I think that we should let, I think we should let the department heads take the lead, and we'll utilize Mr. Sal's services on an hourly basis.
It could be the interim.
And let Brenda be the interim.
As I listen to the discussions, we're talking about Mike as if he's not here, but he's still here, and he can do the job. Brenda does not have to move in. Mike could stay on another two weeks. I hate to say this, Mike, but we're going to pay him anyway. And we can discuss it. I mean, Brenda, I got to tell you, City Hall has gone from 17 to 10. Finance, 17 to 10 in the last two years, now we're going to go 17 to 9. I don't know, I know the budget, the budget's in much better shape than it's ever been, I think, on a Saturday morning, a Sunday morning, when you transition it. So, I mean, we could do it, Mike could stay another two weeks. The department heads, I have total faith, as Mike's hired them all, we have total faith in all of them. They do a terrific job. That could happen. I don't know if we have to appoint Brenda tonight, then Mike walks out the door tomorrow, because that's what the separation contract says. Or we could appoint her, if you want, beginning the 18th of June, which is a week, and she'd be ready for the next council meeting. You know, I'm just throwing out ideas, just as we all are. Mike is available. He has never taken a sick day. He's not going to be, he's not going to, he's, I know by what he says, he is not going to turn in his keys and just go home. He loves the city, he'll work for the city, he'll do what the city needs. I don't know, going from 17 to 9, I think is going to, I'll be hearing from Brenda. Brenda?
Yes, your side.
I mean, really, we talked to Richard, I would like you to come up, to see, I know you have you and Christine, I mean, this is a big decision for the council, for the people of Satellite Beach. We would like to talk to you.
Because of the budget that is, that I'm working on, and it's nearly complete, and since you have six months to come up with a permanent replacement for Mr. Crotty, and that is when I'm gearing up for the audit, and I spent quite a lot of time for the audit, and we are short-staffed now. I would not have enough time to spend filling both positions, even as interim. And I would spend 24 hours a day here, and I have spent 24 hours a day here--
I know.
--many, many nights, because I love doing what I do, and my husband, you know, he understands. And I would do that for the city, because I do love this city and I love my job. But I just feel that I would not, I would not be able to commit enough time to both positions, and I would let you down if I did. So I would respectfully decline--
I don't think that's true. That's not true.
Well, I feel that way in my heart.
I know. I know that that's not true.
And I respectfully decline--
We'll get you another screen, and then you have four screens on your desk.
I would love that. I would love that.
We'll get you the IMAX.
I would love that.
I appreciate your candor. Would anybody like to--
Yeah, I would. Brenda, I appreciate what you're saying, and I was also a municipal employee, and we do have great department heads, but you're asking them to spread themselves so thin and to take on this responsibility that's an interim position that's really just going to get us from point A to point B. And so it's a difficult role to fill, and you've got to respect what she has said. And, you know, I think at this point, we just need to hire a professional and get where we need to be in 180 days.
And I think he would be wonderful. Mr. Sal would be wonderful. I had spoken to him, and I think he has the great credentials, and I think I would be able to work with him. I think the other department heads would work very well with him, and I don't think there would be that, I don't think he would have to put in that many hours, because the department heads are absolutely wonderful. They know their jobs, they have been doing it excellently for so many years. So I don't think he'd have to put in that many hours. Sweet lady.
I have seen the cities he has put together, the CRA he has put together, because they go down south a lot, and pretty nice.
Thank you, Brenda, for your honesty.
He's a good, yeah, but thank you. I'm sorry we didn't ask you sooner, Brenda. I know you're back there going--
Yeah, I would say--
Going, don't pick on me, don't pick on me. Jeff already, you know, bowed out.
I'm not supposed to speak out of turn or clap, so--
Clapping is okay, but we appreciate your candor. Do you have anything you'd like to ask? Boyd?
Thank you.
Greg?
No. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the consideration.
You're welcome.
I think we should move ahead then. With what? I think we should establish a--
An interim? You can make a motion.
I couldn't hear. I couldn't hear.
Does he think that we should establish an interim? You can make a motion, if you get a second, we will, then we will vote on it, and if it's not approved, we will go back to the drawing board.
Don't you have to have a name to establish--
Well, I think that's what he wants to do.
Oh. It'll take me a second.
Okay.
Do you have any other discussion?
Yeah, I was going to say something, believe it or not. Given Brenda's wonderful discourse, I appreciate that, and I agree with the mayor. You could have done the job, but you don't have 36 hours in the day to do it. I think what I would like to do is to look for fixed-price bids to come back to us in a special meeting next Wednesday. In other words, we put out the request for fixed-price bids to be delivered to the city no later than Tuesday, COB, and we discuss them at a Wednesday meeting. And we keep Mike here until we, as we said in the original agreement, appoint an interim manager.
I disagree with that. I think this is an appointment, and it needs to be an appointment. This is not a bid process, and I just don't agree with that. This is a limited timeframe in which we have to fill this slot, and it could get bogged down, and it needs to be filled, and it needs to be filled quickly.
Are you okay with the $165 an hour that's in the contract?
Well, I would like to see it limited to the three-day, and he would have to come back if he was going beyond that, or, you know, he'll be here anyway. He'll be here, you know--
Okay.
We'll have to keep track of that.
You have a comment, a comment, and then-- I think we're going to have-- Go ahead.
I think Richard and CGA are more than competent. I think, I know that we don't have to put out for bid or anything. I would still like to see a contract written down, scope of the work, and that type of thing. I don't know if that's possible to do that as city manager duties, but just have something, and I certainly think we should look at the price, if it's negotiable, if we can have a fixed price, like Mr. Kenberg said, and make sure we're covering our bases on hiring an interim manager. And Mr. Crotty is certainly going to continue to help us with the transition time.
Thank you.
The way ahead is still not clear.
Who did you write?
I'm only half done.
Oh. Do we need more discussion? What are you thinking? Just, I mean--
What I'm thinking is, I mean, I see what Councilwoman Dean is saying about we need the transition, like, now, all right? But at the same time, you know, everything we're saying is that, well, gee, Mike's going to be helping us anyway all throughout this process. So why in the world don't we just let him help us for the next couple of weeks through this process?
I think I should, I mean, that's--
I, it just, we've been dancing around this for, what, an hour and a half now?
He's not going to stay home and watch the French Open. He's coming in.
My leaning is, you know, after, all things considered, we need more information about who would be a solid interim, all right? And we've already got a solid person here right now who can help us with our immediate needs, and I think we should just--
Okay, sorry. What do you think? You can make that a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we retain Mr. Crotty's services for the next couple of weeks until we can--
Well, it's already in the, we don't even have to make that motion, because that's already in--
Yeah, I'm here.
All we have to do is make a motion, I think, to ask for fixed-price bids to be delivered to the city no later than Tuesday, to be discussed in a Wednesday--
And how do you do that? What are the qualifications? How, you have to go out for a bid process. What is the point of that? What kind of qualifications are you going to get? This is an appointment, not a bid process. I'm confused. What, do you put it, is it an advertisement? Is Joe Schmo going to come in and on a piece of paper and say, I'm qualified? How long is this going to take? Are we going to spend hours doing it? We have a budget coming up, we have a process that needs, we need to move through quickly, we have other agenda items. I mean, this is not making sense to me.
I'd like to ask the city clerk. Lenore, I would like to ask you, because other cities have done this, have appointed interims, and I know that you're only in the seat six months, but you've been through a lot of training. Any help that you, how you would go about, like, with an interim? Does it have to be in the paper, website?
I don't foresee that you--
It's an appointment.
In my opinion, it's not a problem to put it in the paper. I think it needs to be a collective choice by council, and you need to really think about the decisions that this person's going to make in the interim.
I guess we're trying to figure out, how do we get the names? How do we get the interested parties?
Just like an application process for an employment position. You know, you can have specifics with his job description and the experience necessary. You can collect all those applicants, review them as counsel, and then have interviews, and decide which one best fits the city as far as the citizens and council and how you progress forward.
I don't think we're going to get that done in two weeks, and I don't see the purpose of it.
I guess the thing is, is that it, I mean, it's $65,000 for three days a week, or July, July, August, September, and half of June. And I know that we are on an austerity program. I know you are, and I know, I mean, we are. I'm not sure where that's going to come from. I'm not sure, how do we get to that $65,000 to allocate to Richard? And will we get the return that we're looking for?
So what you're saying is you sacrifice quality or the skill set for price. We need to get where we need to be, and we have 180 days to do it.
I know. Well, I told you, I think Richard's great. I think his cities are great. I think the CRA is great. I think what he does for us, some people have said that may be a conflict of interest. I do think that we talk about spending $2,100 for the Peach Cast, and now we're talking, now we've got $65,000--
But this is a city manager position, it's a very important, it's the top position in the city. It's a manager-strong city. This is not something you take lightly, and then again, it's just on an interim--
I voted no. I am not taking-- And I don't think-- And I don't think--
Listen, we decided tonight that we're ready for a transition, and now we're floundering on making the transition. I think it's time to cut bait or fish, to be honest with you. And it's time to move forward, and it's time to do it properly and correctly. And that's with professional guidance.
I'm with you, and I think that CGA is very qualified, and I think that they're the, that they would be my choice. But I really, really have an issue with an hourly rate and no--
Well, we just confirmed that he would do the three-day and then be available, and then let us know if there were other issues to deal with, so--
But $165,000, that's still $65,000 in three days.
And the position might even be filled in two months. You never know how quickly they could move. I just don't want to hear it down the road when we're bogged down and things aren't happening, and the city is floundering, and I'm on the record saying that. We need to have a seamless transition.
I understand, but what's to say that they won't, that they won't be one of the ones that comes forward with the fixed-price bid come Wednesday?
And they might, but, I mean, what is the criteria to put in the bid?
We put in Mike's job description, and we put it in the paper in a couple of lines, and I bet you there are already people out there who know that we're going to be looking for--
That's what the interim is going to do, take you through the advertising process to hire a city manager. We're just appointing an interim to get us to that point. So I think you're missing the point. That's the whole process they're going to take us through later.
Yeah. I don't think I am missing the point. I mean, you say that we shouldn't go out for a bid, but that's kind of what we're doing here. We're kind of doing a real-time--
No, we're appointing.
Evaluation.
You know, I hate to throw out a name, but, you know, like Bill Ryan. I don't know, I hate to throw Bill's name. Bill was a city manager for Cocoa Beach forever. He works in our finance department. I don't, I have no idea if he'd be interested. Mike knows him better than I do. But he has geared Cocoa Beach for, do you know how long he was Cocoa Beach City Manager?
He was with Cocoa Beach probably for 12 years.
I mean, Bill, and he works right in the, he works right here. I have no idea, he's probably gonna kill me, mentioning it, but I can think of a city manager. I think that he knows the county, he knows the process.
But then you're, now you're talking, like, you're gonna hire him as the city manager.
No, no, I'm sorry. I mean interim, because I think city manager deserves a headhunter.
Yeah, it's a huge endeavor.
You're right. It does. We cannot just hire someone without a good vetting process.
And so you're asking to go out for a bid, but you have, you're not setting certain criteria to meet to get us, you're bidding on the process, getting us to the process from interim to city manager. And that's difficult. And basically, Richard really just wrote your bid, which is really unfair, because didn't you call him, Colonel Billman, to come here?
We called.
Yeah.
Because of what I found, because of what was briefed to us when he came on the CGA, that he was capable of doing city management.
Richard's, I mean, he's a good.
And he's proven that he is. But again, I can't get by the cost at this point. I can't get by the uncontrolled cost.
Well, I don't think it would be uncontrolled. Richard, if you want to address that again, it's our job to keep dibs on the cost.
Here, what I'd like is if you would like to, to make a motion on what you're saying. If you get a second and approval, then we can go from there. If not, then I think that the council would like to do something else.
Okay.
And then, after we get a motion and a second, we can have discussion.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to hire Calvin Giordano, or appoint Calvin, appoint Calvin Giordano in front of the charter as the interim city manager, to facilitate the hiring of a permanent city manager at an hourly rate of $165, at three days a week.
Okay.
And effective immediately.
All right. I have a motion. Is there a second? We can, we're just gonna go back to discussion. It could come up again. I've seen this, a motion, and then an hour later, the same motion. That happened to Bill. He made a motion, two hours later, he made the same motion, and we approved it. So it said, "Oh, Bill, why didn't you bring that up before?" Okay, so, all right, so that motion at this time is, let's go back to discussion.
Again, let's step back just a minute and discuss the events of the evening. First of all, everyone here is aware that Mike is retiring and leaving his position, and that takes some time to get your arms around. And then, you know, I perhaps unnecessarily brought up the idea that, well, gee, maybe, you know, we should treat this just like we do a regular business situation, where if an employee is, you know, resigns or is terminated, they leave right away. After discussing all these other challenges that we're facing with people, people and their qualifications to step in at a fairly critical juncture in time, you know, we find ourselves struggling with whether we should accept an expensive but acceptable option or to retain an acceptable but, and dedicated option for a finite amount of time. Now, as the separation agreement reads, he's only gonna, Mike would only stay until the end of the month.
Or an interim manager.
Or until an interim is selected. And I think, I honestly think that's the best course of action, all right, at this time, because we have someone here who's tried and true. We will have a little bit more time to take in applications or, you know, letters of interest, whatever form they happen to be. And it meets the needs of the cities from a fiscal perspective, from a procedural perspective, all right? And also stays congruent with the wishes of Mike Karati.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the separation agreement associated with Ordinate 1056, as written, and keep Mr. Karati on staff until 30 June 2012, or until an interim city manager.
And that's already been approved? That's been approved as part of the separation agreement. That concept, we have already approved.
Okay.
And we agreed to, we agreed to pay him administrative leave, so he doesn't, he can, he doesn't have to.
Yeah, truck from 20 June.
Yeah, he doesn't have to stay, so.
So we don't have to do anything?
I thought you made a motion, didn't you, until next Wednesday?
I was gonna make a motion.
You have literally left yourself now with a situation where you might not even have a city manager, because he could, if he wanted, choose to, choose to leave.
Well, we can always appoint.
I'm just saying.
We can always appoint. We can have a special meeting 24 hours, appoint. So we're not gonna get stuck.
Should've thought about that before you made, talked about the separation.
I think our issue here is that in most city situations, there's somebody that you can appoint who's already there.
We don't have, yeah.
And you appoint that person as an interim city manager, and then you go find a headhunting outfit.
That's true.
Or somebody else. We don't have that luxury. So because we don't have that luxury, we're being, we're being asked to accept $195 an hour, very well-qualified company to come in and be our interim city manager.
$165.
$165. I just feel like that, I feel like I'm in a corner with that. What I would like to do is, what I would like to do is advertise the requirement for an interim city manager. I'm not making a motion, I'm just talking. I would like to advertise the requirement for an interim city manager using Mike's duty.
Job description.
Job description. Request that those proposals be, you know, be at the city no later than end of Tuesday, and then have a special meeting Wednesday to go over them. And then, if we select somebody from there, then we abide by the, that part, I'm losing my mind here. We abide by that.
No, I think that's good.
I wanna, I wanna discuss this, because when, when we appointed Lloyd to Mr. Higginson's seat, we didn't follow the same process.
But we weren't spending $195 bucks an hour for Lloyd.
Well, we're trying. We have 180 days. We have 180 days to get to this.
$50 bucks a month, man.
I'm just saying, you need to be careful what you're doing here.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. I make a motion that we, that we place an ad in the paper in the Florida today, in the floor today, requesting bids for a city manager, and those bids be delivered to the city no later than Tuesday, close of business, for a Wednesday after, or evening special.
Special meeting.
Bids with resumes.
Bids with resumes.
Resumes and.
This is for interim.
Interim manager.
That's in there.
Advertise for interim city manager.
And fixed-price bids.
One second.
Oh, thank you, thank you, please. All right, Lenore, can you read that back? Let's read that back. Thank you.
Councilman Billman requested that we put out a bid in the newspaper to request for resumes for the interim city manager position to be received no later than Tuesday, with a special meeting on Wednesday with a fixed-priced bid.
And that's June 12th and June 13th. No later than June 12th and special meeting June 13th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Billman, second by Vice Mayor Rhodes. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I've been very quiet during this, but make sure that since we'll be doing this work, I think a number of the council members receive Ken Small's daily updates. If we would include this request for proposal and resumes, every city manager that's in transition and city manager in the state would receive that. And I can tell you, the turnaround for interim city managers many times is 24 to 48 hours when you're besieged by resumes. So I can include that if you would like.
That would be great. Well, I.
Yes.
Okay. And that's in.
If you have to amend my motion for that, that's fine.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. More discussion.
Nope.
All right, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanan?
No.
Councilman French?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Frante?
Yes. And the motion passes four to one. Thank you, public, council, Mike, Jim, Brenda Jeff, for your input. It took us a long time. I think we got a good decision. Okay. Agenda item number 800, oh my gosh, here we go. Citizen recognition, citizen comments. Some people have been waiting a long time. Jason Steele, sir, good evening. I'm sorry for making you wait, but thank you.
It's perfectly all right. I enjoyed every minute of it, actually. So I'm a glutton for punishment. My name's Jason Steele. I'm a non-resident, I'm a former resident of Satellite Beach.
Oh, just one minute. Sorry, Jason.
And I need to set the record straight tonight on an issue that's been out there, because politics in Satellite Beach has gotten extremely ugly. I think all of you know that. And about a year ago, I was approached by a gentleman by the name of Bob White, who was the vice chairman of the Republican, the Brevard Republican Executive Committee, and Mr. White asked me to give him a contribution. And I gave Mr. White a $100 contribution with the specific notion that it would go for an issues-oriented contribution. It's for a 527. The name ultimately came out that it was the Liberty Catalyst Group. And the Liberty Catalyst Group put out some pretty nasty flyers, and they directed them against council people that were here. And I've gotta tell you that I'm very upset by that, because I've been accused now of being a supporter of Mr. Billman's and Ms. Deanan's, and I think they will both recognize that I'm not their supporters, and they're not my supporters. So I want to set the record straight on that tonight. And I want to share with you just quickly that I wish and hope for this whole council that you slow down. You are about ready to take this city and run it right into the ground. And I can't tell you how upset I am by what happened tonight here. This gentleman right here is the finest city manager in this entire state. And what I saw was a council that did not know what they were doing, that were flying by the seat of their pants, that had no idea what the costs were gonna be on the most important decision for this city that could ever be made. I was disappointed. Even though I did not support Mr. Billman, even though I did not support Ms. Deanan, I wish you all of the luck and success in the world in straightening out the city, but slow down. The decisions that you're going to make are absolutely critical to this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Second is Dominic Montanaro. Then I have Olive Leonard and Kathleen. Good evening, Dominic.
Good evening, Dominic Montanaro. I'm a resident, and I just want to go on record as saying, I'm not one of the cowards that Councilman Billman referred to. My name has always been attached to anything that I've ever done, and I've always stated who I am. I've made phone calls, and I'll address those at some other point in time, because there were false accusations that were made about me that referred to that stuff. But with that being said, I sat here, and I took the same oath that all of you did. And Joel got up here and said, "The election's over, and the city needs to come together." And the city does need to come together. But the residents of the city need to know the truth about who's running their city. What would the perception of the residents of Satellite Beach be of an individual who took an oath to obey and uphold the codes of the city of Satellite Beach and the laws of the state of Florida, who defrauded the city of permit fees by installing windows on his home without a building permit, as required by the Florida Building Code and the city codes? Who on July 27, 2011, again, attempted to defraud the city of permit fees, when he and a licensed general contractor were caught installing sliding glass doors at his residence without a building permit? Who habitually has been delinquent in paying the city business tax for the business that he conducts from his residence in violation of Section 5893 and 96 of the city code? Who is habitually delinquent in paying his Brevard County business tax and was fined on 316 of 2012? Who was habitually allowed, his Brevard, who was habitually allowed, excuse me? Am I doing something wrong?
No, I, but I.
Who has habitually allowed his Brevard County contractor's license to lapse and continued to do business without a valid license? Who was caught contracting without a license on March 15, 2012, and issued a $250 citation by the county for operating without a license for six and a half months before he was caught? He went from August 31, 2011, to March 15, 2012, without a license? Who during that same time operated as a contractor without a valid certificate of insurance as required by law? Who filed his 2011 Florida Corporation Report and fees one year late on March 15, 2012, the same day he filed his 2012 annual report, which was required.
Dominic?
Yes?
I know you haven't mentioned names, but I.
I haven't mentioned names.
I know, we are.
I haven't mentioned any names.
We're, I know, but we know who you're addressing. Is there, no, it's five for citizen.
On December 7, 2011, there were comments made by two councilmen that citizens have the right to speak whatever they want to speak on, and they were in the minutes of the 2011 December 11 meeting. Who currently has a vehicle parked in his driveway without a current tag, which is a violation of city code, Section 26-57 and 58. Who removed his roof and completed the dry-in portion of a replacement in September 2011. For the past nine months, the roof has not had shingles or metal covering, as required by Section 3552. Should the residents of this city perceive this individual as someone who, one, understands and respects the oath of office that he took? Who, two, is competent to manage the business affairs of his business? Or, three, who should be making decisions that affect over 10,000 residents of our city? Thank you. I have all the accompanying public record documents for everything I've stated.
It's a bit of for the record, yeah. I'm unworthy to be a councilman. That's fine. That's fine, whatever. Hope you win the election in November. There you go.
Ms. Olive Leonard?
Can you believe that? Oh my God.
Is that a good speech?
Wow. What a putz. Yeah, putz. That's okay.
I'm Olive Leonard, resident for 50 years. I'm the wife of the former mayor, Reginald Leonard, and I just wanted to say, both Reg and I have known Mike for a long time, and we want to, we want to comment very much that he has been a wonderful mayor, a mayor, pardon me, wonderful city manager. He has done a great job, and he has been, in every case, very thoughtful, very honest, and very capable. And I thank you, and what I wanted to do was lead a cheer, hip, hip, hooray, three times, just like we did for the Queen the other night. That is my comment, all right? Thank you.
Your timing, you believe.
All right, thank you. And say hello to Reg, and we will not have eel pie. That's the big thing. Kathleen?
This gentleman in the green just told me to shut up before, and I asked you to invoke the civility clause, and it's still happening, okay? And he's done that before too.
I hear what you're saying. You kept interrupting his speaker.
You've done this every meeting I've been here.
All right.
Don't come here anymore.
Please, thank you, Gabe. Thank you, Kathleen. You have five minutes.
Sir, please invoke that rule. Well, I was just gonna leave, lying dogs lie, and do what the red. Well, I was just going to leave lying dogs lie and do what the resignation for the manager and what he wants and everything else. And then, you know, we got two people up here, Mr. Jason and Mr. Montanaro, that to me should get the A-hole of the year award. So we're just using acronyms and alphabets. So congratulations to the two of them. But let's just all focus here and keep in mind that the reason we're having problems with our city manager position is, I'm just going to mention a few things right now so people can remember what this is all about tonight, is our city manager allowed illegal transfers of CRA funds for six budget years, placing the city both in debt and in jeopardy of litigation. He allowed the purchase of a non-beachfront property that cost the city nearly a million dollars in losses, peg legs. He hired the former CRA director, who in 2007 she clearly and on the record identified as inappropriate, the use of CRA funds to pay for police and fire services. He encouraged the same CRA director to file a false police report to discredit a citizen who tried to point out the illegal CRA transactions. He hired the accounting firm, whom for every year the CRA funds illegally transferred funds, stated the transactions of the city were within the bounds of the law. He also allowed the city to assume massive debt while offering city employees substantial benefits and pay raises. He used monthly car allowance for personal income when travel was hardly used and he resides in the city. He spun up the community on several issues instead of correcting the fiscal problems within the department. Stockpiled sick leave and vacation time over the years and flexed his time but with no supervision or auditing. Did nothing to discourage negative citizens from negative propaganda during the elections afterwards, even while he was friends with these people.
I don't mean to stop you, but we had a transition and a separation, and why didn't you bring this up during those? I mean, we talked about the city manager.
Because I almost had to change your heart, and then I see these people come up here.
I know, but we talked about to the city.
Sir, you're questioning my speech. I just want to finish. I don't want to be questioned.
I know you'd like to hear her speech, but.
I'm almost done.
But we've already discussed the agenda.
They also consider the city itself, she puts his needs first while also putting the city in a fiscal nightmare. For these few reasons, I feel that the current city manager, Mr. Mike Crati, should be fired with cause. I also feel the city lawyer, Mr. Beadle, should leave with him.
We've already discussed this.
No, you've agreed on his resignation, but that's how I feel.
It has been the agenda item. You are, that is not, I will not listen. We have done this for three hours. City council comments. Does anybody have anything, Lloyd?
Yeah, I actually do. I think Mr. Steele's comments were inappropriate. In fact, I attended Mr. Steele's fundraiser. So I don't, I don't know what that was about. Those hit pieces that went out, I had nothing to do with them. So I don't appreciate his comments. I don't know, I don't even know what that came from. In fact, I'm sorry, I contributed to his campaign now, actually. The other thing is, I do believe that the city council made a grave mistake by not appointing a city manager interim tonight. I really do. And I really would, I think you should actually reconsider, based on some of the things that were here. We can sling mud, I've got plenty to sling, but it's not going to stop until we get a city manager in place and get this ball rolling to get a new manager in place within 180 days. This is going to continue on and continue on and continue on. And that's all I have to say.
Vice Mayor?
I don't have it on that.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass. City attorney. Jim, you have some stuff to bring up.
I have two items. One is REM. I did speak with, and I think I emailed everybody just to let you know what the status was. And I talked to Alan to find out what the city really probably needs. The REMs are out of town until the end of the month. And, but his, their attorney indicated that we can try and work stuff out through the Internet or whatever, and he wanted me to take a first stab at whatever the easement's going to say. So based on the conversation at the council at the prior meetings as far as what they were interested in, as far as what would be contained in the easement, I'm going to draft an ordinance, I mean, an easement and send it over to Mr. Fu Jerus, who is the REM's attorney. And we'll see what we can get done while we're waiting for the REMs to come back.
I did see that that's on the June 20 resolution vacating easement, REM property.
That's not going to be on that.
Not going to, not going to work?
No.
Okay.
That would be tied hand in hand into whatever the easement is.
Okay, okay.
And the only other issue is, we did get the opinion from the Attorney General back. The Attorney General essentially was of the opinion that because it's not specifically provided for in the statute for the city to be able to allow or impose a four-fifths vote by referendum, that it's not allowed. There was some discussion about a case that arose out of St. Pete Beach that essentially talked about, there were four, if I remember this right, there were four ballot questions, and two of them related to the CRA. But there was a distinction between the two initial questions and the two that related to CRA. And the court construed the CRA questions to be more of a straw poll, and it wasn't a mandatory requirement. So the court indicated there was nothing that precluded the city from adopting that type of a thing if they wanted to do a straw poll. The only other case, some of the discussion that I had on the phone with the assistant AG that wrote this opinion was, is there's, the courts might be leaning toward, let me go back one step. The issue that the, that the Attorney General is looking at is, is essentially a preemption doctrine, preemption. In other words, the, you know, the legislature basically preempts an area of the law, and the city can't do anything other than as specifically provided for. There is two different kinds of preemption. One's express, and the other one is, is that they regulate in an area so extensively that the courts will construe it to mean that you can't do anything other than the way that they've done it. That's the way the Attorney General is looking at the CRA statute. But they're looking at the, some of the last comments in the letter related to the fact that, well, maybe the courts are looking at it, that it doesn't need to be, you know, that it needs to be more along the express rather than the extensive regulation area. But that's kind of where we're at. The AG's office is still of the opinion that we can't do it.
Mr. Beadle, I talked about that, and I think what I'm going to do is, in a future meeting somewhere down the line, I think I'm going to discuss with everybody here the potential to maybe have a supermajority vote of counsel in order for the CRA to in debt the citizens. In other words, if we can't, if we can't make it a referendum, if we can't send it from the CRA right to referendum for the voters, which apparently the AG says we can't, then I would like to discuss the potential of making it a supermajority vote of counsel to, for the CRA to in debt the citizens. So in other words, the CRA would vote to in debt the citizens, but they'd have to bring it to us in order to, in order to vote, or make it a supermajority vote of the CRA. Either one.
The CRA is meeting on the 27th.
Mm-hmm.
You want to put it on there?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a good one to discuss there.
I'm not sure what's on that, what's on the topic that night. But we are meeting on the 27th.
I just feel that we need to have some sort of control, and I think that's, that's the best way to get it. If the AG won't allow us to go to referendum, then I think we need to do a supermajority reform.
Cheryl, I will ask you also, I know you got an IG report from Fort Lauderdale Beach on a.
That was an inspector general report.
Yeah, IG, did you send that to?
Yes.
Attorney?
I brought it off. I haven't read it yet.
Okay.
You want a summary? Would you like a summary? I'll give you.
That report concerns me. That gives me a lot of concern.
The IG may be specific to that.
I would like to, if you don't mind. Yeah, I would just, I highlighted a few things. There was a Broward County Inspector General report that came out on March 26. And the OIG investigated, found that the officials of City Lauderdale Lakes have grossly mismanaged public funds entrusted into its care. The OIG investigated, investigation also substantiated allegations that the CRA's, the city CRA funds were improperly used to pay for city operating expenses. And this is, that's in their memo. The Inspector General began an investigation into allegations that officials of City of Lauderdale Lakes had grossly mismanaged public funds entrusted into its care, as well as incurring 2.5 million debt to its own community redevelopment agency. The OIG investigation also substantiated allegations that the city CRA's funds were improperly used to pay for city operating expenses. A practice with, a practice which the chairman of the CRA board, who was not aware of it at the time, described as a shell game. And I think this is the most important thing. The investigation also raised concerns about the level of communication with the city's elected officials who were misled about the city's financial condition. The investigation indicates that the state dismisses information as attributable not only to the city administration, but to the city commission as well, because its members failed to properly review and comprehend written reports submitted by independent auditors and failed to demand more frequent financial reports from city administration. And that's the summary.
Thank you. Jim, so when you download, read that and look at that also, exactly who the IG is too. I don't know if it's local county IG or if it's Calahasi IG.
And I'd like to ask the city attorney also to review that report in light of our situation and tell us, tell us how much, how much liability we have right now.
Yeah, both things that you presented tonight. Mike, do you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number nine. Senior Pastor Dr. Joe Dursa, sir, good evening, how are you?
Good evening. I will let you know I meet regularly with the four pastors who are pastor churches in our area. We pray for you weekly.
Thank you.
And if they knew how long these meetings went and how much worse they were than churches, we probably would pray more often for you. On behalf of Satellite Beach United Methodist Church, let me say thank you for last year. You allowed us to invite and host the nomads at our facility in January. Some of you may or may not know what the nomads are. They are basically retired RVers who allow themselves, if we allow them to stay at the church, they come and work at the church accomplishing jobs in our area and in the community. They completed the painting of two exterior buildings, some fence projects, painted a church-earned home, did some indoor carpeting. And I finally got one person from the, from the city to respond, and I found a gentleman in the area who was going to have to pay somebody to come and take care of his lawn, that kind of thing, or they were going to start writing fines. So we took care of that for him. I'm here to really have you consider two things. First, we'd like to be able to invite the nomads back to work at the church and around the community like we did last year, this coming January. We have continuing needs. We also hope, and I will actually, I didn't do this last year, I will this coming year, I will call each of you personally and ask you for someone in the community to assist. We did that through several folks and only got one. I'm going to be real insistent, okay? If you allow us to do this, that you find somebody, they're your constituents, find somebody that we can help, a single mother who's having problems, elderly couple, somebody in the city, like we did last year. But I did run into a problem this year with the nomads, which presented me with both a problem and a, maybe a source of joy. The nomads do not have enough places to go in the wintertime, and they called and asked because folks had had such a good time, if we would host another group in November of this year. And I told them I simply don't have enough things to do around the church. And then I called them back and said, as long as the church sponsors it, can we do anything? And she said, yes. So what I would like to do is be able to invite them to come in November through December and offer to the city for our church and the nomads to sponsor a volunteer around the city event, working with you all or the fire department or the building department, if there are park things that need to be done. You know, you're down to seven or nine or 10 people in the city. Trust me, there's some things that aren't getting done around here, okay? They will come in, and if you provide the material, we will provide all of the labor. So if you want gates built, if you want fences put up, if you need, you know, buildings painted, they will do that if you'll just simply provide the materials for that. Typically, the nomads work like this. They work four days a week. They work six hours a day. They request that we provide them place for three weeks and three weeks only, and then they move on to another thing. So what I really would need for the city is approval to have them come both times, at least the one time for the church. If you have them come both times, I will probably ask that we do two times a volunteer, a week and a half with the city in November and early December, and another week and a half in January, when they come in January. And the other time, we use them for some projects around the church. But they have offered to us to come and do this. I hate to see good labor go to waste when it could be used to provide some benefit for the city. We will host them on our property like we did before. We have spots for the four RVs. If you'll allow me to have somebody from the city that I can go to and work this out, and you all would help promote a, you know, volunteer for the city timeframe. If you're willing to do that, I'm willing to do that. So I'll lay it before you and ask your permission to do those things.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. That's very kind of you. Let me bring it back to the council and see what their thoughts are.
I think what they do is tremendous. I think it'd be nice if their services could be opened up to folks in the city who may need it. Not necessarily help for the city itself, but there's folks out there that, you know, their places are rundown perhaps, and maybe need a little.
You know, we are strong on this community for a lifetime, which is working with the elderly. And our fire department goes into their houses and says, you need to change.
I know we've got some ramp programs that we've done. I mean, they, these are, some of these folks are retired carpenters, they're plumbers, roofers, they're all kinds of.
I've gone into some houses, 92, 93 by them. I'm sure you have two, Pastor.
How do you handle materials?
Well, we ask that the organization provide materials. Now, if you'll allow me to do this, and do this, I will actually approach some of the businesses in town and ask them to provide the materials for this, okay? And tell them that this is a contribution to the city. It may mean that y'all have to give them a plaque to say, thanks for your contribution to the city.
Well, sir.
Okay? But I would approach businesses about doing that.
Pastor, how does somebody, if they need your help, how does somebody get that known?
I'm going to call you. I'm asking for you all, the city, as a city, you know the city better than I do. I've been here two years. I mean, okay? Olive is a member of my congregation. If I need to know, I call Olive. But I've been here for two years. I drive up and down the city. Last year, the people that we helped came out of John's office. John said, you know, if the man doesn't get this stuff cut back, we're going to have to find him. And so he gave me the name, and we went over and we cut back grass that was, well, I measured it at one place, it came to my knee. And I'm not a short person, okay? We mowed the grass and cut back the trees and trimmed the bushes, and gosh, he has a brown house now, which you couldn't see from afar.
I wonder if there's a way to, to have a request form put on, like the city website?
I would love to have a request form for if they need assistance, and also something to advertise, this is the week, if you're in the city and would like to volunteer and help, our nomads will kind of head it up. If there's some other people in the city who want to volunteer, they'd love to do that. Some of our folks, you know, would be willing to do that as well. But I, you know, whatever kind of form you want to create, I'd be fine with that.
I think, I asked you before, before, there's no dissension from neighbors or anything about having those there or anything?
Was there any comments made last time? John, I got to tell you, it was an extremely positive thing last year. I was directly involved with it, and it was just a very positive experience for everyone.
I used to walk my dog past him almost daily, and, I mean, they just, they just appeared there one day. Everything was very neat and tidy.
They don't, I mean, somebody, you know, the city council asked, and I know, we didn't have any bonfires, we didn't have kumbaya, all the meetings were done inside the building. Directly across from them are the two retirement communities, and most of them went over at some point and visited with those folks just to say hello and, you know, thanks for allowing us to be in the neighborhood, so.
Well, Dr. Joe, could I ask you to take a seat at the table?
Absolutely.
I just want to get some public comment on this agenda item. I'd like to open agenda item number nine for public comment, for the ability to have the nomads come two times February, Jan.
November 26. And again in January.
And January, and to provide labor for the city, and city pay for materials. Michelle?
Michelle French, city resident. I think it's a great idea. I think, just listening to Alan, the Public Works, Republic Works guy, Alan Potter, he talked about needing people to paint, needing people to do things. I think it would be wonderful, and I agree. I've been by there, and there's never any problem. But it's got to be a win-win. There's no way that it can, there, it can be anything else. I do, I think the idea of putting it out there for, on the website is great. I do, I think the idea of putting it out there for, on the website is great. I kind of would like to have an idea of what they would like to be doing, you know? I mean, like, I know a couple of doors down from me, the woman and the man, they are on a limited income, they have a disabled child, they have another child, and it's, but I don't know exactly what their needs are. They do not own the house. But, so I'd kind of like to know what there might be jobs, there might be...
Our fire department probably has...
I was going to say, it varies some from group to group because we never know exactly who's coming.
Oh, okay.
They will not do a job that requires any kind of a city permit.
Okay.
So they will not come in and rewire somebody's portion of their house because that requires a permit. They will fix a faucet, they will not replumb anything. If it requires a permit, they won't do that, okay? So they will only do jobs...
Just like helping out.
It's like helping hands.
And that's what I think everybody would need to know. If they're going to be out in the community trying to find people that, you know, you might think would be needing that, then, you know, that's good to know. I'll keep my eyes open, but I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
The schools help too. Vic and Skip, no, you let him go last time, Vic. Then we'll let Skip go.
Thank you. Vic Brungart, current non-resident, former long-term resident. I used to be a member of the Satellite Beach United Methodist Church when we first came here in 1998.
We have a spot available for you.
Well, I'm now Trinity Presbyterian.
Oh, okay. Okay, I know you're pastor.
I just, Dr. Joe, I don't know you, I've never met you, but this, this has got to be one of the best, as Michelle said, one of the best win-win things around, and I think it's just great what you guys are doing. I just wish Trinity Presbyterian and Pastor Michael would do the same thing. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Skip?
Skip Bollinger, resident. I just wanted to speak to this issue. We had a similar group came and assisted our church a few years ago when we needed the new roof, and what were they, John? Campers with a mission?
Campers on a mission.
Campers on a mission, which was a similar, similar group. And we owe the existence of our church today to their volunteered services, for which we're very grateful, and we're also grateful to the council of the day for granting them permission to do what this pastor wants to do. So it was a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Marcarola, Satellite Beach resident. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I almost feel ashamed to ask this as a Christian person, and I know these are religious Christian people. If some people came up to my house, and I was just there by myself and said, hey, we're here for three weeks, can we paint your fence, put your backyard, mow your grass? I might be grateful but a little bit lenient. Is there any kind of...
We will not come up to your house. You have to...
No, no, no. Here's my question. Is there any kind of basic criminal background check that's done on individuals in this group? And again, I apologize, I know they have religious conviction, but...
We have not done that, although we have around our preschool, we just simply keep them separate from that, okay? Now, if that is something the city would like, that's absolutely something that can be done, it's part of the form, we just have not requested that in the past.
Because you just, you just never really know, right?
Right. I understand.
That's all, thank you.
I understand. And if the city would like, I would include that in our form that we would request them to have background checks.
It's very expensive.
No, sir, it's not. Not in the Methodist Church, it's not.
Oh, oh. I know it Holy Name did it.
I understand, I understand that, but since the Methodist Church across the United States does it, it costs us about $15 or $17 a person.
You have access to the highest authority.
I have access to a different authority than you, responding. There is a cost to it, but it's not exorbitant, and we'll cover the cost of that, okay? If the city council would like that.
No, I would think, just like the public school, if they're working with children, I think it's important, I'm not, I'm not so...
Right.
You know, and I don't think they're going to be, you know, if they're going into schools and stuff, everyone that works in the school...
Right.
Finger printed and drug tested.
Right.
But not...
We really were not anticipating that they'd come into the schools. We were really thinking more along the terms of parks, building ramps, because I know the program's there, doing some exterior work on homes.
Let me finish public comment, and we'll just see if the council wants to do that.
Very good.
Because I know it's going to cost you some money. Any other public comment? All right, let me bring it back to the council for approval of this and possibly adding another check mark for background.
Okay. Just one other quick question. Is three weeks enough?
They, they will only come three weeks at a time.
Okay.
Okay? So what they've asked is essentially, since we had asked for January, they called and said, we have time in November and early December, would you be available then? So we've only allowed that. Now, if this is something you want to continue, they come to Florida in the wintertime, and so it's, it would be like an every winter kind of thing.
Surprise. Yeah, I understand. All right, what do you think? Background. Background check.
It's 15 bucks, that's pretty cheap, huh?
It's, yeah, it's probably, I remember they come in four to eight, maybe 10 people.
Yeah, no, there'll be four campers, there'll be two in each camper, no more, so there's eight, a total of eight people.
Okay.
You want background checks?
I don't know. If you're not going to be around a school, I don't...
We're not going to be around a school, and for their own safety, they will not go into someone's home without two of them being there.
Well, let's ask our police chief. I mean, could we do that?
Oh, yeah, Jeff. I mean, what do you think? I mean, the question's to you. Background checks, I mean, we have people, I think we have people go around the city. Contractors don't have background checks, do they?
We've never had a problem with any of the people who do this. We know where they are, and they travel around. It's a decision that, I mean, the police department doesn't have an issue with it because the people are going to call and say, we want you to come here. They're going to be supervised, there's going to be two people with them.
Yeah. I think it... I'm not, I'm sorry. We're discussing...
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to allow an exception to city code section 30-615B and 3 for four RVs with overnight occupants to stay on church grounds at 450 Lee Avenue for a period of approximately three weeks.
Second.
Three weeks in November, December, and three weeks in January, is that acceptable circumstance?
Two periods of three weeks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Billman, second by Councilman French. Lenore?
Councilman Medina?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman French?
Yes.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Ferrante?
Yes, and the motion, as approved, we'll go with that.
Thank you very much. Now, you all know that I will call you on behalf of helping you find me some folks to do some work out. And thank you for your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I am thrilled with this meeting, but I'm going to leave.
Sure, you may want to, okay, agenda, we have till 12:20. Agenda item number...
Oh, that's the old record.
Agenda item number 10 is Satellite Beach Women's Club has requested that the council indicate if the appropriate city staff support will be included in our next budget. Mr. Karate?
I'd like to call in Carrie Stone, who's recreation director, to present.
Hi, Carrie. Hi, fellas. And members of the Satellite Beach Women's Club.
Do you... We have this.
Thank you.
Phil is handing out a quick history of the women's club and participation in Founder's Day. We've had Founder's Day for a long time, as you all know, that's a long time. Used to be Founder's Day, or the city celebration, was a parade in August, and we kind of joined up with the art league and had a parade and an art show, which kind of pulled up the whole day of celebration. Had to move from August to the hot time of the month, out of the hot time of the month to November. Needed a partner in order to pull up the date, and we asked the people to do a craft show with us. Keep it in mind that this day is a community celebration, and since we're a small community, the rec department can't do all components of that event, so we partnered with the women's club to be part of it, the Lions Club helps out, volunteers help out, we've had head air force baseball volunteers come and help us. So as a community event, it is our, kind of our signature event for the city, and without the help of the women's club and all the cooperation involved with the charity, we would have a very small parade and nothing to do afterwards. So what we're hoping is that we can continue Founder's Day, and hopes that the community can continue their signature.
Okay, let me bring it back to the council for discussion. Phyllis, would you like to say something?
Yes.
I've been waiting. Okay, go ahead.
The club was formed in 1964, and they had two major projects, to get a library for the city and beach property. We got that done in 1960, and the money raised was bake sales and luncheons and fashion shows and more bake sales. And in 1973, two of our members said, wouldn't it be nice to have one fundraiser? And we wouldn't have to do this constantly. And they came up with the idea of Marketplace, and we had worked with the city so much that the city said, you can use our civic center, this building. At that time, Founder's Day was in August, and about two or three years later, the city approached and said, why don't we combine Founder's Day and Marketplace? Founder's Day being the parade, and we'll end up at the civic center. The bands then could play, and we had all kinds of fancy things. And then we moved to the Schecter Center, and we were thrilled with that because it was inside. You see here, we had the patio, the auditorium, all these grounds, and worried about rain. The Schecter Center was fine. We work on this about eight months the year because it's a big production for us. We have already sent out 100 letters to vendors. Money is coming in from the vendors. We charge $50 for one table space. We do not take any of their profits. So the vendors call us quite often because it's a good deal for them. It's a big celebration for the city. If you see the people out there, and they have all kinds of things for sale, kids and jewelry and all kinds.
Kids, kids for sale?
And we're amazed that, that the people come out to it, but they do.
I understand.
We used to cook all the food, and our members have to bake, everybody has to bake, and we have trash and treasures. But fixing that food got a bit much, and somebody got the bright idea of asking restaurants in the area, would they come? And since we're a 501(c)(3), they said, we'll give you a donation that they can write off, I think. And so now we have restaurants that come, so we don't have to fix the food, and that's wonderful. This year would be the 39th Marketplace. It is a, now, we, most of the money from Marketplace goes to the charities in this area and in Melbourne, and to the civic organizations in this area. We are a 501(c)(3), and so our financial statements are available to everyone. You have the latest one, and one I prepared after May 31st. So you see where we give our money. We have other fundraisers that are in-house that our members give, and that you'll see is called a silent auction and a holiday project. The Marketplace, we have very little expense because our members give of their time and their talent, and the fact that we work many months for the two days. The Lions Club help us, the high school students, the National Honor Society and the Beta Club that all need hours, volunteer hours, they help us. So it is a wonderful thing that we have done with the city. It's been a community project. It's not just one and the other, because we couldn't do it without you, and I don't, I'm not sure you could do a Marketplace without us. It is a bit of work. So that's all we'd like to, and look at our, look at our financial sheet, and you see that we do give a fair amount of money to the city. Look at the $1,500 we give to the teachers at Satellite and some of the other projects.
Thank you. And I'd like to bring it back to the council. If you'd like to sit down, we'll ask questions of you and Carrie. And let me bring it back to the council. Discussion. Carrie, before I bring it back to the council, how much are we talking about? I know there's labor involved, we have labor, financial. Is it, I got 1405 circled here, but I think that's, that's...
You know, it's hard to actually put a precise number on it, but I sign vouchers for about $1,600, things like port-a-potty for the parade up at Delora, just odd things out and about, the band is in that, the rental of the tent. And all those things go to support the after-the-parade activities for the wrap-up of the afternoon of Founder's Day. The other costs are generally associated with employee costs, such as helping, Public Works comes out and helps us with all of the barricades, because there's a lot of barricades and cones that need to go out between the start of the parade, Founder's Day, at the Schecter Center, and following afterwards. So Public Works is involved in that, fire, police, I think John's even come out and helped us before. It's a, it's a big city effort, and it's real hard to say how much, I would, it would be hard for me to say how much employee staff dollars there actually are, but...
Okay, well, you have provided us with that, and I want to definitely open it to the council. I just didn't know the cash, I have 140510 circled for theme, band, DJ, tent rental, porta potty, parade awards. And then we have everything else broken down. Let me open this to the council.
Well, Mike and I had discussed earlier this year about making, you know, assisting and then making Founder's Day a bigger, grander event, kind of like Melbourne Beach where it extended into the evening, but it sounds to me like we're short-staffed and it's probably not feasible, so we'll just leave it status quo. Works for me.
Phyllis, how many volunteer hours does the women's club put into this?
We have about, our own members run about 75, and they all participate because of the fact that we have one fundraiser, they do the one time. And then we have the Lions Club, as I say, and the Boy Scouts help us, the students, the band, of course, that's a part of the parade, but they love to be able to have that. Then they come, when they end at Marketplace, they still play, so people get to hear the bands that never hear, then we go to football games or they don't go to their concerts. So it's a, it has been a huge volunteer thing for many years. And people just, of course, they come out to watch the parade, and then they come down onto the Schecter Center. People come from different towns. It seems to be one of the few things on that first Saturday in November, and it's been that same day since 1973. So the first Saturday in November, you come to Satellite Beach.
I've gone every year, and I enjoy it.
Especially before Election Day.
Doesn't matter.
Especially right before Election Day, yes.
We work all day, Friday, getting that, that Schecter Center.
Oh, it was great.
And, and the thing that, for years, the ladies tried to measure what one table space was, where you can tape it, and someone got the bright idea, why don't you ask H Hardware to come and do that? And they said they'd love to, and they do, and that's wonderful, because that's a difficult, because you give somebody that much more space than you gave that when you're in trouble.
Yeah, that, I wouldn't want to be in the way when that happens.
Do you have some comments?
I had a couple of questions. Phyllis, these, this financial report, is this what you submit to, I guess, the IRS for your, to maintain your 501(c)(3)?
Yes. We are a 501(c)(3) under our parent organization, the General Federation of Women's Clubs in Washington, DC. We're a subsidiary. We received it. Not many clubs are under their umbrella. We are under their umbrella because we give away more than we spend on ourselves.
Okay.
And that's the only way you can keep. We file the IRS, and then because we are a 501(c)(3), we also are exempt from paying sales tax when we buy something. You will notice on our sheet that we paid $358 in sales tax last year. That we have to pay on the $50 vendors, and on the bake sale and the flea market, anything we sell, we have to pay sales tax on. And we have, with the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Affairs, we are registered with them, we pay our fee each year, we pay our state corporation, we are incorporated in the state of Florida.
Okay. I, where did, are there other items that the city provides, or the rec center perhaps provides that may not be listed here? Like, I mean, I didn't see any things like tables and chairs and things like that listed in this, in the... in this, in the breakdown of costs.
For the outside area?
For inside or outside?
Well, we have tables and chairs on the inside.
Okay.
So the vendors will use as many tables as we have available between what they need for bake sale and treasure and vendors. Last year, we used tables from the teen zone under the tent, so we didn't have to rent the tables last year. We have, we use the teen zone chairs as well.
That's what I was going to ask you. So we don't do a lot of renting. This is a lot of in-stock stuff that we already have, right? It's just a matter of pulling it out and using it? Tables, chairs?
As far as last year, that's what we did. We rented the tent and the stage. Oh, actually, we used the stage last year. So we rented the tent last year and the porta potty. It depends on what's happening each year as to whether we have to rent tables and chairs.
Okay. I mean, that's great.
We try not to.
Right.
I just noted that you had also said that you had paid out vouchers about $1,600?
About $1,400.
Oh, okay. I thought you said $1,600.
About $1,600.
Oh, okay.
But it's $58.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to open Agenda Item Number 10 for public comment. It appears, if I can get a reading from the council, that they would like to support this community effort for this November, and it would be a part of our budget, just from what I'm hearing. Michelle, public comment, please.
Michelle French, City resident. And I've been going for years and years, and I would be probably the only, one of the only people that liked it here better than up there, because I thought it had a much more outdoorsy flair to it. I liked it. But regardless, I heard you say something about, when you mentioned vendors, and I guess I'm asking a question because I really don't know, I'm trying to understand a little bit better. Vendors, meaning the people that rent the tables, not the people that bring the food. Okay? Like, you have vendors, restaurants coming in. I'm wondering if, what I'm getting at is, when you said that we don't charge a profit, or we don't take any of the profit from the vendors, I don't know if that means any of the profit from the vendors that rent the tables, or the vendors that bring the food in. Because I'm kind of thinking like, it might be, you know, just the same as we did with the Pelican Beach, where we had a vendor come in and we, you know, we might want to maybe consider the city getting maybe a slight portion of their profit of the vendor, what they sell, the food people, the restaurant. I'm just thinking that might be a way to maybe balance a little bit better of, you know, what the city, the taxpayers put out. I mean, it is a great event. Everybody does enjoy going to it and stuff. And so that's my thought in trying to recoup a little bit of funding, I guess. The other thing is, I just have to say, I've only looked at the financial report just briefly. I did not delve into it. But, and this is just my opinion for the Women's Club, I was a little disturbed or distressed about the administrative costs for the Women's Club at $7,000. I just thought that seemed a bit high. I don't know, I would like to see maybe lower administrative costs, maybe more money going back into the community or something, but that's just my opinion.
Can I explain that one, please?
Sure.
On that...
Yes, go ahead.
On administrative costs, if you would look on your under-administrative, when I tell you to see income, when you have a district meeting, if you look in the income, our members pay to go to the district meeting, so that's income. I write a check, if there's six of us go at $15, then I write a check to the club for the same amount. It's an in and out.
Okay, so it's a wash.
But I have to list it because it comes in and it goes out. The same way with many of our things, there's an in and out. The lunches, the members pay, and then I pay. That's why your administrative costs look so high. It's not really that, but I can't just leave that off the financial statement.
Accounting issue, yeah.
Because the accountants say, "I've got to put it there."
I'm glad you're here.
So that's why it's there.
I'm glad you're here, Phyllis.
We don't spend that much money.
Other public comment?
The restaurants do pay us $250.
Sorry?
The restaurants pay $250, and they all ask to come back, so they must make money.
Money, yeah.
And they probably, because they ask us for the 501(c)(3) forms when they give us the money. So I take it that they, it's a charitable write-off for them.
And you do use Satellite Beach Restaurants as much as possible, which is really nice, too. I think that that's great for Founder's Day, so thank you. Dana, did you want to say something?
Dana Bilman, resident. I liked Cheryl's idea where you talked about we would grow Founder's Day into something more, and Carrie and I had discussed something of bringing in some other things or newer things, and I don't know why we can't just continue with that. If we can get it together this year, great. If we can, it doesn't mean it was a bad idea, and I think that's always, we should put that out there. We've obviously gone to restaurants. They're excited. They like to come do that. Why would we think that any other type of vendor wouldn't be excited to also come and just add them into our cost structure? So I don't know that we need to eliminate that and just do it always. It can always be growing and getting better and changing and, you know. So, I don't know. I think we support it, but I don't see that there's any reason why we can't just continue to grow it, or come up with new ideas, or work with things, and...
But I don't think that's a council issue. I think that's a Women's Club issue. I mean, if the Women's Club want to do it, I say, "Let's support them and go do it."
Several months ago, there was a chain of emails where Mike and I were going back and forth, and there is cost associated with this, and overtime. And so we talked about maybe raising the fee per table to $55, and the Women's Club getting 50, and we get five back, or doing RFP for the outside, but nothing really happened with it. Because we do have, there is an expense with it, so it could be a bigger, grander event, or do an RFP for the vendors and recoup some of that money. So we'd actually been working on it for a while, but it just didn't come to fruition.
Yeah, but there's no reason why we couldn't still try to get vendors that want to come in, and the city take a portion of it, if that's determination or something, but I think we still can look at positive.
I'm just going to make a motion to support them, including overtime costs, and before...
Thank you.
Oh, are they not done yet?
That was just what I'm saying. I mean, I think it's a good event, and I don't think we should take it, but I also think we can continue to look at ideas and change it and modify it and grow it, and, you know, things can always be evolving. Just because they're good now doesn't mean they can't be better, some other ways.
Thank you. Other public comment? Carol? And Dee?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Carol, you'll be next.
I wasn't going to, but I'm Dee Anderson. I am chairman of Marketplace Founder's Day this year. So trust me, we have Long Doggers, Domino's Pizza, Beefo Brady's, and Slow &amp; Low BBQ. This year is set up. Everything is set up already to do. If you would like to, in the future, add to it like last year, I think it'd be a tremendous idea. If you could put more restaurants in, if you found the room, there's a lot of room we take up, as we are, if you go around and look at it. But it is such a fun thing. We are working on it. Our theme this year is Satellite Beach Goes Country. We have cowboy hats that we're going to wear, and we have all our workers and landline, everything together. If you want to expand it, I would say, next year, look into it and expand it. But this year, we're already into a lot of it. A lot of work's already been done, which would mean we would have to revamp, which is a little bit too late to do. We want to start again. We've stopped because we didn't know if we were going to be able to go ahead with this, but I wish you would fund it, and if you will, and come out, enjoy it, and be an electioneer. It's a lot of fun.
Ms. Anderson, if we're all going out and talking to businesses, so are you saying that if we run into a restaurant that would like to do it, they can't do it now?
We are already, like, Slow &amp; Low has a 32-foot...
Oh, so they're already spread out?
It's all spread out. We only have room for two electrical outlets outside. If there's any more than that, we can't do it. So we've, everything is really laid out outside and inside, where we're doing the work on the vendors, and we just, and with the parade and everything. It's really a thing in this town. We started it in 19... Louis Shepp and I started it in 1973. I've lived here 43 years, and we've been doing it every year. And this is the money we make, and trust me, if we don't keep it, it goes. Everybody gets a bite of the apple. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
Perhaps I'm just restating what's already been stated. This is a great time for our community to come together, for, to see the people that are running for elections, to do all of those wonderful things, and I sincerely hope that you'll go ahead and approve it.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back.
No, I'm good.
No, did you want to make a motion?
Yep. I make a motion that we support Founder's Day 2012 with supporting staff, including overtime costs associated with the city's ongoing involvement.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Dean, and second by Councilman Bilman. Lenore?
Councilwoman French?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bilman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Bob?
Yes, and a motion passes unanimously. I thank you very much for coming, ladies, members of the Women's Club, and thank you very much, Carrie, and for everything you do.
Mr. Mayor, there's a representative here for the Pelican Coast Platte.
All right. What number is that?
Number 13.
Well, you've been really patient.
I didn't know you were...
Good morning.
Not yet, not yet. All right. Agenda, and then do you want to take a little break? Then we'll take a five-minute break. I'm getting a little hot. Discuss take action on approval of Pel... We're going to skip 11 and 12, which are two readings of ordinances, and we want to talk about Pelican Coast Phase One final platte.
Mr. Carter? I'd like Mr. Stone to introduce it and then call on the representative.
Hi, John.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you for approving the United Methodist Church. It's a wonderful thing they do, and it's what community's all about, so thank you all for that.
You are welcome. Thank you, John.
The applicant, Hunt Development Group, represented by Allen Engineering, has requested approval of the final platte for Pelican Coast Phase One. The platte consists of the 156 military homes and associated infrastructure located in the southwest area of the Pelican Coast PUD. Mr. Bob Solomon over here, Solomon, from Allen Engineering, is here to field any questions the council may have. When approved, the platte, my lars, I believe Lenore has them over there, those will require some signatures by the mayor, attorney, and city clerk. The platte's been reviewed by the city attorney, the building official, city engineer, and their surveyor, and determined to be in compliance with Porta Statutes 177.091. And Mr. Solomon's available if you have questions for him.
Sir, good evening.
Okay. My name's Robert Salmon. I work for Allen Engineering. I'm a registered surveyor there. And this is a record platte for Pelican Coast Phase One, project that was started back in 2003. And for various reasons, management money, whatever, we're finally at a point where we're ready to record the record platte. And basically, it's an administrative thing. Having a recorded platte is a requirement of the city, and the lots can never be sold or transferred. The underlying land really belongs to the Air Force through reversionary clauses, but currently it's being managed and leased by Pinnacle Hunt.
We don't have the platte. What has happened to the other 300 homes in the platte? I mean, Phase Two and Three, are they... What's there?
As I understand it, the Air Force does not need that many housing units.
Right.
Okay. So the land at this point, all the old homes have been demolished, the roads have been removed, and basically, it's just standing there as open land. I believe that the city's been working with the developer, possibly to get some other tenants in there or purchasers, but so far, nothing's come to fruition. I don't know that they're going to go on with any more housing units.
I have a question. I don't have any backup documentation here, and I don't really understand the history, and so I'm hesitant to... You said it's an administrative approval, but yet you're coming to the city council for approval. I'm not getting this. Somebody has to fill me in a little bit.
We don't have it. We don't have it. No, Lenore has it.
It's right here, but there's no historic background. I mean, what is the history of this platte?
Well, I went to lunch, we went to lunch...
We went to lunch.
And you explained it to me, so that's why I have it. That's why I have the knowledge.
I believe the invitation went out to everybody on the council. But basically, the project was started in 2003. Our initial client was a group called Patrick Family Housing, and they started construction in 2004. All the homes have been permitted. All the homes have COs. People are living in them. We have streets, roads, streetlights, perimeter wall around the project. A portion of the land is still owned by the Air Force, and they're using it for recreational fields. But one of the city's requirements at the time they approved the PUD is that all the land would have to be platted. But before it was platted, all the improvements had to be complete. So just recently, all the improvements have been completed. We have, the Air Force has agreed to be a joiner in the dedication. The mortgage holders and bondholders have agreed to the joiners, and now it's, we need a city council approval so we can go forward and record the record platte. The lots can never be sold. They'll always be owned by the Air Force.
I'm bewildered, because it says, "Activities started in 2005 with permission of the council prior to plating, since the properties would not be sold." So there's more to this, and I just don't feel there's enough background information to make a decision.
What is the decision that's being looked for? The decision that's being looked for is approval of the platte is drawn.
That's right. Once the city council signs that, we record the record platte with the public records.
Okay. Mr. Stone, have you reviewed that platte?
Yes, I have, as well as the city engineer, their surveyor, our city attorney, their attorney, Kurt Moses, I believe it is.
And you guys are okay with it?
Quinton Hampton?
We have all reviewed it and are okay with it.
Is that our city engineer, Quinton Hampton, David King?
Yes, I did.
As far as I'm concerned, if city staff is, I mean, you explained it to me. I'm a knucklehead when it comes to that kind of stuff, and it made sense. But if you, if the city staff looked at it, the city attorney looked at it, and everybody from the, you know, from that perspective said it's okay, then, I mean, I wouldn't know what I'm looking at anyway. You would, but I wouldn't.
I'm of the mind of approving the...
The city attorney will have to sign that platte, so he has reviewed it, and he's not going to sign it.
I would say, John, or Mike, that that information of who reviewed it, we used to get, you know, and it would be nice to have that information, because we know that you reviewed it, Quinton Hampton reviewed it.
Quinton Hampton's surveyor signature is on the my lars.
And you know, Jim has reviewed it, and you reviewed it. It gives me a better feeling than, platte's done.
Correct.
I'd like you to sign it.
Well, we've been through...
No, no, sir, I understand, Mr. Salmon. I'm just saying that...
I understand.
It's taken a poll just the way it's written here. We want to make sure that we sign it good. I think it's okay.
Is there a time issue on this?
I think the joiners was a concern.
The joiners were the concern, and they've finally agreed to join in the dedication. And basically, what the dedication does is it dedicates the streets and the easements to the public and the utilities. So it dedicates the streets and the easements to the public and to the public utilities, such as Cocoa Beach water and reclamation, and Cocoa Water, Melbourne Water, and City Cocoa Beach for fire and protection.
So no change, City of Cocoa Beach for fire and protection?
No, no. City of Satellite Beach.
Satellite Beach.
You said that you're going to dedicate the streets to the City of Satellite Beach?
I believe that's what the dedication says.
Which means we have to maintain them?
No, you don't have to maintain...
See, this is where I don't feel comfortable.
They will be maintained by the developer. They will be maintained by the developer.
Correct. Mr. Beadle, could you discuss your review?
Basically, the final platte, and that is my recollection of how it played out, was is that, at the time, all of the improvements were not contemplated to be done prior to the need at the time to commence development of the single-family residences that are in the southwest corner of the project. The city agreed that it would issue permits pursuant to a preliminary platte with...
The city agreed that it would issue permits pursuant to a preliminary platte with the final platte to be required to be submitted at the time of the completion of the improvements that were required, as Mr. Salmon indicated. And that's why we're now here. The, I would take issue with Mr. Salmon's representation, whether he understands it to be an issue or not, but I can't sit here and say today that those lots will never be conveyed. And if they are conveyed, then that's the purpose of the platte, is that we convey pursuant to the lot, the lot and the, on the, because there is no block number, from my recollection, they're just, you don't have to do that, there are blocks. I mean, I don't remember their block numbers, is my point. And, but the process did go through, and I know that there were some hiccups because of some issues that were out there, which included one of the joiners, which was the joiner from the lender. The lender was like a chicken and egg kind of a thing. They're not gonna allow the joiner to be recorded until we record the platte, but we're not gonna allow the platte to be recorded unless we have the joiners, because you need to have all that done at the same time. So that was the last item that had to be dealt with, and Kurt Mosley indicated to me a couple of weeks ago that that, in fact, had occurred. From a technical standpoint, which is what basically the platte approval process is, is it's predominantly a technical issue, there's a laundry list of things that the plattes have to have. I went through and looked at it from the context of what, you know, what it looked like needed to be in there from my perspective, and then deferred to the surveyors and the engineers to make sure that all the other stuff was in there. And as John indicated, that, you know, I've been advised that the other individuals that are supposed to look at it have done that.
So...
And, you know, when, and I guess John indicated that at least the, either the surveyor or engineer here from David King's office already signed off on the platte, so...
On this, on our agenda report form, it says, "City Attorney Review for Legal, yes, but you haven't signed off on it." Are you comfortable that?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not gonna sign off until council approves it, and the milars are here for me to sign if that's, in fact, what happens tonight.
I personally am not comfortable with this, I'm not background data, so I would like to see it come back with more background data, so I understand the history before we approve it, but it's up to the council.
What do you got? What's the risk?
Is there a risk if he signs it, or will you approve it?
You're...
You're an expert.
I haven't looked at the plans. I don't know the background, so it's up to the council, they do whatever they, whatever they choose.
What type of data would you like for backgrounds?
Just a historic background. I mean, it was approved with the preliminary platte in 2004 or '05. I just don't know anything about it, so...
I mean, all the applications and approvals should be here at the city.
They should be in this agenda package, so I could've looked at them before you came here.
I didn't put the agenda package together.
All right, sir, could I ask you to sit next to John? Let me open this. I have, I'd like to open Agenda Item Number Thirteen. This is approval of the Pelican Coast Phase One Final Platte for citizen comment.
Skip Wallinger, resident. I've got a question here, and admittedly, I'm all wet, have not done my homework on this, and was not following the story when the rumors were going around. That being said, rumors some years ago were that the city annexed or inherited or something from the old base housing that was demolished, and new developers came in and built a bunch of new homes, and the city ended up being responsible for providing services, like police, fire, et cetera. And yet, something fell through the crack where the city derived no ad valorem property tax revenue from that deal. In other words, the city inadvertently ended up with the short end of the stick. Now, if that's correct, and if these are the same principal people involved, and they are now coming to us, or coming to council, wanting council to approve something administratively for them, my suggestion would be, assuming what I started out with, what was, there was some validity to that story, wouldn't this be a good opportunity to say, "Hey, you guys want this stuff signed off on, we would like some tax revenue commensurate with the services that the city is providing to these homes, so that the rest of the residents of Satellite Beach aren't giving a free ride to the residents of this new area." Now, if I'm all wet on this, if I'm wrong, I apologize for taking everybody's time, so...
Thank you, sir.
But if I'm right, I would think it'd be bear looking into.
Several years ago, when Hunt Pinnacle took over, we had a pilot agreement, paying in, payment in lieu of taxes with them, where they gave us $100,000, which at the time was more than the ad valorem would bring in from that property. We did go a few years, because it was considered Air Force property, and Air Force doesn't pay taxes, but that went away probably six or seven...
Actually, what happened was, is there was an understanding at the time that the property was annexed or to be annexed, that the city was to derive tax revenue to support the services that the city had promised to take care of. For whatever reason, the then owners went in and got the property exempted. The city actually filed a lawsuit against the property owners to force them to pay the taxes. When Hunt Pinnacle bought the property, is that right, when they bought the property, they agreed to the pilot, so the city is deriving annual income from the property.
And the northern portion of that property, on the north side of Shearwater Parkway, has always paid taxes.
The issue that you brought up, Mr. Wallinger, was actually as a result of that first company, not of the current...
So then, that issue, is there one side to it, but it's been resolved?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry for taking up council time.
That's all right. And we do hear, and we do hear also, I'll just throw this in there, that I think that since the property is no longer just strictly Air Force, that it may come back on the tax rolls for ad valorem instead of pilot, is that...
We've already presented information from the property appraiser's office, that he has made the determination that for 2012, that property is taxable.
Is taxable, so how much did we lose?
Last time, the numbers for 2011 have not been, been released, but based on, or 2012, 2011 numbers, it's, the delta's about 22,000.
See, it's worth 78.
But that's based, again, that's based upon 2011 values, where the property had the limitations on, you know, so the property appraiser, if something's tax exempt, they don't annually update it to the market. They give the exemption, essentially frees the value. So when we get the final tabulation of the property taxes, we will...
Dick Brungart, non-resident. I remember back in, I think it was 2001 and '02, when Dan Rock was the chief and Donnie Hughes was the commander at the fire department, there was a lot of discussion back and forth on who does what with regard to when there's fire, you know, an actual fire going on. And the point that I'm making about that, I'm not even sure if that is all settled yet between, you know, Engine 62 up there and on the, on the medic side, what satellite does. Bottom line is, there's a lot of expense here that I'm not sure everybody is aware of in the fire side. I don't know about the police side at all, but the fire side, it's up in the air. Now, as far as this tax business goes, I, I'm like Skip, a lot of the stuff I've read has just been in the newspaper, so it could be wrong, but I would be very, very cautious. It says, "Discuss and take action on approval of the final platte." I know with General Development Corporation down in Palm Bay, there was a lot of business that went on when Palm Bay took over the final platte from General Development. And I don't know if there's enough information out here, if I were on council, to really say, "Okay, take that final platte." I probably wouldn't take it unless I got a whole lot more information than what I've read about. I think there's a lot of exposure out here that you may not know about.
Thank you.
John?
You be next, Joel.
Don McClendon, resident. I apologize to the engineer and council, I wasn't here for the discussion of Agenda Item, but I'm very interested in this, and probably one of the most informed citizens on this whole development, I think Mike could pack some of that up. I know the history, I know where it's been, I know where, I think I know where it's going. My, I knew that the tax appraiser was going to put that back on the tax roll, the Air Force had a 5% interest, and that was the basis of the Carabatta and the Shaw Industries, I think, exemption. Hunt Pinnacle stepped up, and, but at least, what I missed, and I wanted to know about, was the undeveloped property to the east of the, the developed homes on south side of Shearwater. Is that in, considered Phase One?
No.
No.
All right, well, then, then the topic.
Thank you.
Joel Shurgis, and I am a resident, and I'm a NUD. NUD stands for not unusually gifted, it's a Navy term. You guys have me totally confused about what the hell's going on in that platte, okay? Who owns it? Who benefits from it? Who can do what with it? With whose permission? When? And how?
The platte does not govern that.
Well, what you said is, the plots, the plots can't be, and the reason I say that is, the plots can't be sold because the underlying property is owned by the Air Force. Okay, that tells me, or not the plots, the, yeah, the plots, which tells me the Air Force owns the stuff, and nobody can do anything with it without the Air Force's permission. Yet, there's three stakeholders in here, I guess. What role does the city play in this? Does the city have any say on what's going on in there? And I know you, you guys are just doing the surveyor thing, but you brought the, you sparked my interest when you said, "The lots can't be sold because the underlying property is owned by the Air Force." Almost word for word. I may be stupid, but I can remember things. So that tells me that the Air Force has total control, because they own the property. But now, I'm hearing, it goes back in the tax rolls, which the Air Force doesn't pay taxes, so who's paying the taxes? And who owns the property? And who can do what with it? And when can we do it with it? Thank you.
Other, other public comment?
Dana Billman, resident. I guess I, I'm taking it that all we're doing for the plating is where the military houses are now? Is that correct? It has nothing to do with the hundred acres? Those are two totally separate issues. Okay, thank you.
Jim, you, can you add some guidance?
Yes. The property is owned by Hunt Pinnacle. The property is subject to conditions that are imposed by the Air Force, and there is some question as to exactly what the Air Force is going to do with the property, because, as indicated in prior discussions, the Air Force does not need the balance of the property for the originally contemplated residential units for the Air Force. And that was what led to some of the discussion about, you know, the city helping to market some of the property, or some of the commercial people may be using some of the property, at least along A1A, for other purposes. And the Air Force still controls that. And, you know, whether the Air Force ultimately relinquishes quote-unquote "control" over the property or not is still open to debate, but the fact is, is that the city had a, or has an ordinance, that essentially required somebody, if they want to put a development in, they have to comply with whatever the regulations were that they contemplated doing, and at the time, that was the PUD, which is why it's a, it's a, it's a PUD development, is what it is. And the city requires that the area be platted. It doesn't say it has to be owned or not owned by somebody, but it has to be platted in order for, in, especially for the building department issue, is, is that when, when permits are issued for, in this case, single-family residences, there was something to identify where the permit was for. And also to identify, especially to identify where the roads are gonna be, you have to name the roads, so they have to be included on the platte, they, you know, all of those types of things, where the easements are gonna be for public utilities and drainage. And those are, those were tentatively identified on the preliminary platte, and this was just to basically show the facts on the ground, is what it is. That's what the final platte is for. And like I said, the, the issue about what's on the platte, on the final platte, is basically dictated by what's in the statute and what's in our code. And it's, it's a technical type of, of an issue, and that's, that's where we are. And, and just to clear it up, the, the roads are not being dedicated to the public, they're, they're, actually indicates on the platte that they are, in fact, private roads. The developer is still gonna control those roads.
And maintain them.
And, excuse me?
And maintain them.
Correct. And, and the, but the, all of the easements are dedicated to the public for whatever the reasons are that are designated on the platte. You know, stormwater, wa, water, sewer, those types of things. Cable, you know, all of those types of issues.
I still have public comment. Is there any other public comment? All right, let me bring it back to the council, see if we can get a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the city council approved the final platte for Pelican Coast Phase One.
Have any motion there?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Billman, second by Councilman French. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanan?
No.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman French?
Yes.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Frantek?
Yes, and the motion passes four to one. We gotta take a few minutes, 25 till 11. We'll come back. We have a couple more agenda items, a couple of reading of ordinances. Take about 10 minutes, please. No, I just, I just...
Okay.
We're ready to vote.
Hold on one second. No, 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 sir. He's ready now. You did four to one on the other, now we're on the...
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I'm just giving you a hard time. We had a reading of ordinance number 1054.
Wait, wait, you're back up there.
Okay.
I gotta get there.
And this is Agenda Item Number 11, and we just did an ordinance, we just read ordinance number 1054, and are ready for discussion. So on the second reading.
Okay, you're at council comments.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, ordinance number 1054, second reading.
Make a motion.
Let me, let me get that, and then we'll come back. Public comment, the ordinance number 1054? None.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 1054 on second reading.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilman Billman, second by Councilwoman Deanan. Lenore?
Councilman French?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Frantek?
Yes, and Lenore, I did mention that this is, that that was a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and this, I am gonna go to ordinance, Agenda Item Number 12, this is also a public hearing, and it's ordinance number 1055. Mr. Beadle?
Ordinance number 1055, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, calling a referendum election to amend Section 6.03 of the city charter to create a new provision prohibiting any increase in ad valorem millage rate, amount of non-ad valorem assessment or public service tax rate over prior year's millage rate, non-ad valorem assessment rate or public utility, excuse me, public service tax rate without the affirmative vote of four-fifths of the city council, prohibiting imposition of previously not imposed non-ad valorem assessment or public service tax without affirmative vote of four-fifths of city council, providing effective date, the second reading of ordinance number 1055.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beadle. Mr. Karate, anything? Council comments?
Yeah, on 1055, what did we come out with?
Bring that with me.
Yeah, I don't have it here with me, but, but we're still gonna, we've worked out how it's actually gonna show up on the ballot, correct?
Correct.
The wording?
And you... Actually, I don't remember what it was.
Actually, I don't remember what it was. It says, shall City of Satellite Beach amendments charter to require a supermajority vote, four-fifths, to approve any increase in ad valorem millage rate, non-ad valorem assessments or public, public service tax rates, as well as the introduction of any non-ad valorem, actually, I take that back, as well as any non-ad valorem assessment or public service tax not previously imposing.
This is shall Satellite Beach amendments charter to require four instead of three council member votes to approve any increase in ad valorem millage rate or introduction or increase of non-ad valorem assessments or public service tax rates in excess of the current fiscal year.
Yeah, that's it. It is, it's here on this, this first page. Yeah.
Yeah. But that's why I put as well as, because introduction is not in excess of a part for a current fiscal year.
I'm sorry?
An introduction is not in excess of a current fiscal year, that's why I worded it the way I sent it on email. I mean, you can put it this way, I'm just, it's.
Introduction would be like a new tax, like a.
Right.
Correct.
Introduction or increase of.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but an introduction can't be in excess of a current fiscal year.
Oh, okay, see, the way I read that was, or introduction, or increase of non-ad valorem assessments of public service tax rates in excess of current fiscal year. I like that.
How about put a comma after introduction?
There you go.
Can you read it one more time?
Shall Satellite Beach amendments charter to require four instead of three council member votes to approve any increase in ad valorem millage rate, comma, or introduction, comma, or increase of non-ad valorem assessments or public service tax rates in excess of the current fiscal year. Is that what you had?
I mean, it's, yeah. It's better than what.
The comma, you forgot the comma.
Jim, if we approve the ordinance and those words get wordsmithed for the referendum, we can.
Whatever you adopt tonight, it has to be in there.
It has to be in.
Why don't you go on to the next, another agenda, and I'll, I'll see if I can remember how I wrote it.
Yeah, because we do what I talked about, and it sounded like we had it done.
A little different.
I thought you were remembering, so that's why.
I'm sorry, no, I didn't.
Okay, we'll do another agenda item. We're going to hold 1055, and Mike?
Number 14. Let me, I instructed David not to be here this evening because of the items on the agenda, but this is fairly straightforward, and this would save him a trip at the next meeting if the council would merely like to extend the agreement for another year. It's interesting to note that that provision of extending it on an annual basis really is kind of counter to the termination clause that you have in the agreement, because either the consultant, Quinton Hampton, or the council can terminate the agreement simply by informing the other of their intention to terminate. But what's before you this evening, if you want to approve it, would be to make a motion to authorize the extension for an additional year, the consulting services agreement with
Any council discussion?
How long have they been, or?
Six years, I think, six. Just gone on the sixth year, I think.
Six years?
Yeah, six years.
Do they have a plat rate? Have they changed their rates, or everything is just?
What are the rates?
Their schedule's attached to the agreement, I believe.
There you go. All right, no?
I don't see it.
I think it's page four?
Page 415. And David provided a comparison in, I believe, in his cover letter regarding what other cities charge and how much he charges on, on the back of his cover page. And David is available to come to the council and discuss this if you would like.
Mike, I just have one question, we don't have a local firm that is qualified to do that?
Well, we have in the past, we, we've gone out for competitive proposals probably three or four times in the last 15 years for this.
But is there anybody in Satellite Beach that does this, that you're aware of?
Satellite Beach engineering firm?
Not, not in, right in Satellite Beach, but in the area.
Oh.
Yeah, tons of them.
Right there in the corner of Jackson and South Bed. NEI, Millennium Engineering.
I'm still not seeing the hourly rate.
Well, the hourly rate?
Yeah, the hourly rate.
It's just a percentage of the.
No, there's an hourly rate as well, that's for bidding, that's when they bid a project. That's a percentage based on the bid cost, yeah.
That's for a capital project, yeah.
Yeah, that's not, the hourly rate.
But let me put this on the next agenda.
Because I'm sure the hourly rate is in probably the $200 level area.
If you put it on the next agenda, do you, would you like the engineer to be here?
Yeah, well, I would, I would like to know what the hourly rate is.
We get all that in.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Jim, are we ready to go back to?
Yeah, almost, almost enough.
Could you leave my handwriting, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want us just to, to wait if you're almost?
No, go ahead and do the next.
Okay, agenda item number 16, amendment to council policies and procedures. Agenda item number 16, Mr. Karati.
Is the council's desire to go through this this evening or future?
No, I, I would, I'm, I would rather not, yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
I have to be in Boca in the morning, so.
Oh, oh. Okay, approved, agenda item number 17, city attorney's attendance at the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association Seminar. Let's skip that, so Mr. Beadle will tell us about that. Budget issues?
Budget issues, we have a budget workshop scheduled for tomorrow evening. My suggestion to the council is, because of the great progress that we've made in preparing the budget, we're probably six to seven weeks ahead of where we typically are, the staff has worked diligently, almost as partners with the volunteers on the CAPEG committee over the last three or four months, and the budget really is in pre-final form to present to the city council. The millage rate is about two-tenths lower than was adopted for this past year. As a suggestion, I would like to have the council consider having the, at least the interim manager put his or her touch on it and, and have the meeting with the council at some time in the future. Because, I mean, we are so far ahead of where we typically are at this time. And actually, we could have a surplus plus meeting our GASP54 regulations, the numbers have worked out very well, and we also have control sheets for all the departmental efficiencies that came out of the efficiency report that will show the, the cost savings. Is that okay with the council?
You okay with not meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mike, that's done. I think, because I, I think we also scheduled a meeting for next Wednesday.
Yes, we did, yeah.
Oh, that's.
Is that still on the schedule? I mean.
We have a special meeting now.
Well, that's what I mean, the, the special meeting for, to look at.
Interim.
Resumes.
Can I ask a question on that? Are you just going to look at resumes, or do you want to invite the people who submit to be here?
I think that's.
I mean, because if you don't, you're talking another week, and then by the time they get it, it's the following week. So I'll put in there that they should be here.
And answer your question.
Okay.
And what happens if we get, if you get 15 of them, you want all 15 to come?
Sure.
Okay.
More than married.
Okay. I think you will get 10 responses.
Okay, then we shouldn't have a series of questions that we'd like to ask, too, so we're, we're.
I think I remembered how I wrote it.
Okay, Jim.
Shall Satellite Beach amendments charter to approve any increase in ad valorem millage rate or increase the amount of non-ad valorem assessments or public service tax rates in excess of the current fiscal year, comma, as well as approve any not then currently opposed non-ad valorem assessment or public service tax. Wow, that's about longer than I remembered. Because the issue that I, that I had when I thought about it was, when you introduce something, it's, it's, it can't be in excess of the current fiscal year because it wasn't ever there.
Because what, what I had written down from our conversation was, shall Satellite Beach amendments charter to require a supermajority, four of five vote, to approve any increase in ad valorem millage rate, or introduction of, or increase to, amount of non-ad valorem assessments or public service tax rates.
And then I sent you a different one.
No.
But that's, I mean, that's one, I mean, it's.
Did you have in excess of the current fiscal year?
In excess of the prior fiscal year.
This is rather an important issue with a referendum question that's going to be going in your charter. We can call a 15-minute meeting before we meet next Wednesday night to finalize this.
Yeah, do you want to go back and look at, I remember we were trying to simplify it.
Yeah, we were.
Probably want to go back and look.
Let me go back, because I, I thought that I, when I, when we emailed back and forth, I thought, because you said that.
I have to go back and look at my emails.
Yeah, let's.
But that, that sounded a little longer than I remembered.
Yeah, and it may be, I'm just trying to remember exactly.
A little more confusing.
Is it legal, is it legal if, if, like, I go back into my emails, I see what you and I wrote, I send it to you, and you send it to the other council members?
Well, we just put it in the.
So, so that we can coordinate before the 15 minutes, you know, so when we come in?
Yeah, I mean, it would be what it was, nobody can react to it, it is what it is.
Right, right, okay, I'll do that, I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Okay. Jim, you're up, attendance, Florida Municipal Attorney Association Seminar?
I think Mike included my cover letter or sheet for that. Basically, just to give some background for the new council, historically, the city actually paid for me to go to two seminars, which was the, this municipal attorneys association seminar and the local government seminar that's put on by the Florida Bar. You know, I, I indicated in the letter that, you know, a couple of years, actually, I don't remember exactly what it was, it's three or four years ago, I kind of decided that it probably wasn't worthwhile for me to go to both of them, both from a substantive and from a cost of the city standpoint, and have now basically just got the FMA seminar. It's usually pretty topical, and I think if you look at the agenda, there's actually some things in here that might actually have some relevance to the city, at least in the short term. So I'm just asking for council's approval to attend the seminar.
Okay, is there any council comment?
Well, yeah, what got my attention was, it's 800, about 800 bucks, and that doesn't include transportation. And it's at the Waldorf Astoria.
They, the attorneys travel in, in Marco Island.
So here we are, we're about to undergo a efficiency program in this city, we're going to be reviewing city employees' policy to align their benefits with industry standards, and, I mean, no offense to Mr. Beadle, but we're sending our attorney to the Waldorf Astoria.
Is it, is it?
I'm sorry.
The Marlow Beach Resort?
Marco, I'm sorry, the Marriott, the Marriott Beach Resort. The Waldorf Astoria was another thing I was looking at.
You're not even close.
It's actually the one I was looking at going to.
Yeah, what's that?
No, what I was looking at there was.
We had a problem, how did I do with that?
Oh, right here. This is from a guy who had been in another, that was in a city council south of here. And he said he went to, when he was first on council, he went to not the lawyer event, but another event called the Florida Shore and Beach Preservation Association that we apparently have sent people to, and that one was at the Waldorf Astoria, in Naples. And like he said, he goes, you know, "I went to that, I saw Satellite Beach people there, I was appalled at actually having gone," because he didn't realize what it was till he went, he says, "I've never been back to another one." And, you know, in these austere times, I'm wondering if that's the best.
We used to go to, in fact, we, we went right over here to the, there was no coastal involved. Was that beaches and?
Yeah, beaches and restoration, yeah. The day seven.
We used to go to the hurricane conference, too, so.
I'm just saying, it's, it's a different time now.
I know. Jim, what are you thinking? I mean, do you think that important events are, justify the trip?
I mean, it keeps me updated and everything else, I mean, that's.
Do you do CEUs? Do you get CEUs?
Yeah.
And you get them for this?
CEU.
Continuing education.
I think it's CLE.
Yeah, CLE.
Okay, what's the, what's the preference of the council?
I vote no. I know we're not voting, but that's my sense. I just don't think in these times we can, we can be seen doing that.
Would that mean that we don't get to go to the League of Cities and?
Well, actually, we turned, we turned them down earlier, we didn't go, Greg and I didn't go. We were asked. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't gone to anything.
That's going to come up next, that's August 23rd. But is this money budgeted?
It's charged to the line item for the city attorney, and, and quite frankly, those, that line item is in jeopardy this year because of additional legal fees, and then also the fees associated with the labor attorney because of the unionization.
That teetered me towards no.
Teeter?
Sorry, I was kind of on the edge.
Teetered, just teetered. We have a no and a teeter. Let me open agenda item number 17 for public comment.
Vic Bringart, non-residents, I don't think that I would fund this myself if I were on council for appearance sake. I just got through reading the Good Old Boys of Brevard book, and for anybody that's read that, this smacks of that, for appearance sake. Now, you might get something out of it, but then again, you may not. I wouldn't fund it. And I would like to add that there is a possibility on the budget that I might consider filing a multimillion-dollar lawsuit against the City of Satellite Beach for a false criminal charge by the Satellite Beach Police Department against me.
Okay, let's talk about the attorney, the attorney.
I'm hurrying. Dana Bilman, resident, is there any reason why if Mr. Beadle wants to finance the trip himself, he couldn't still go? I mean, does a city have to send you, or can you just go, or how does that work?
I haven't considered that because I haven't had to before.
Well, I'm thinking, I mean, if you get your CEU-type credits, I mean, that's a benefit to you and your law degree or, you know, profession, so I don't know, if it's the city has to sponsor, maybe we could agree to sponsor him, but he could go ahead and do that, just a thought.
This would fund half of each.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, let's, Mike, you do nothing, do we need a motion one way or the other?
Well, if you want to approve it, you need to make a motion. If you decide to take no action, then you don't need to make a motion.
Any action? Anybody want to make a motion? Jim, we're going to pass. All right. The next regular council meeting is the 20th of June, and we have some.
We have a number of lighting. We have a number of items from this meeting that we either delayed or will take subsequent action, and any other items that the council wishes to enact?
I, I have a couple of things. We talked about the gray property on cinnamon a couple weeks ago, and that was a priority to make amendments to the code. What, what is the status on that?
I have forwarded all that information in several other lots that we are aware of, where there were development issues because of size of lots and regulations. We, we forwarded that on to Lorraine Tappin at CGA, and she's taking a look at that, and I'm sure they'll have a proposal back, because that's beyond what they're looking at for the CRA, so we're just waiting on that. But I talked with them before I left for, before the Memorial Day, so they should have something.
Okay, and then I had reviewed the boards on the agenda for today, and then it was, I guess, the city was inundated with public records requests at the end of last week, so Lenore had called, and we discussed removing it, because it just couldn't get done. But the meeting before that, we did have a long conversation about putting a standard form online for public records requests, and that hasn't been done yet.
Right, I, I know, I got that.
And, and the policy, it might help streamline, and, you know, it took away from our, our agenda because of the public records request, and I'm, I know they have to be done, but they can be done in a reasonable time, and so council work needs to come first.
And Lenore knows what you want on the board.
Yeah, we talked...
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about it at the last meeting. In fact, it was a pretty extensive conversation, so.
I'm sure this will fill up, June 20th, because we have some other things. All right, adoption amendments. May 2nd, May 11th, May 16th.
On the May 11th one, there was some, I think some missed or misaligned inputs, especially on the bottom page, it was on the first page. Council had the following discussion. I'm trying to read my notes here. Oh, I'm sorry, no, it was on the next, it was on page two. The things that it said that you said, that, that the mayor said, the third bullet, criteria necessary would have to be current knowledge on budget issues, I had actually said that.
Yes, I can say all that.
And then...
We'll move that to you.
Yeah, that, that should be up underneath, that should be up underneath me.
Are you, that's... Do you understand that, Paul?
Well, wait, you know, I, I have some issues, too, because I, I know I spoke more than this, yeah, so...
I apologize.
Do we want to have these looked at again?
Why don't we have those looked at again?
I'll do that.
Because I, I see some other ones, and just, just a point, on page three, under Ms. Montnarrow's discussion, yes, she said all that, but she started out by saying that, that she acknowledged that council had the right to make an appointment per the charter, and then she went in and said all that. So I just, we just need to make sure that...
I, I think, I think the dates are March 11th, should be May 11th.
Yes, like I said, and I apologize, I should have not even said it.
That's okay.
Didn't Barbara also make a comment about how the hand gets its strength and dexterity? Doesn't the opposing thumb? I remember that. I thought that was sort of...
How, how long, how intense, I guess?
Well, this was, this was a very important meeting, so...
I just thought that was sort of a cool thing.
Well, I think this was a very important meeting that needs to be documented appropriately.
Okay, how about the other two? Do we have May 2nd and, I think May 2nd came in the email.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And May 16th?
I reviewed May 2nd, and it looked, okay to me.
May 16th was swearing in.
Right.
Be okay.
That was the special meeting?
Yes, it's, it's the special meeting of May 16th, not the regular meeting, and...
Right, because that meeting didn't get out until May 17th.
We're looking at the 2nd and the 16th.
Did you want, the, the only thing that I would suggest, if you want to do it, it's up to you, is add your statement to it. Just give Lenore your statement to put in there. Because you stood up here and you made a statement.
Oh, I didn't have anything written.
Oh, I thought you read, I'm sorry.
Well, we have to either...
Yeah, I didn't have anything written.
Gee, okay.
That was on your feet, impromptu.
Well, reading that, is that the gist of it, so Lenore doesn't have to go back and do a verbatim on that one?
I did listen to the audio on this one.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I...
Want anything added, I have no...
Actually, it sounds better than probably what I said.
Yeah.
I did listen to it.
Sure, 11:10. Make, can we get a motion, can we get a motion on those two? The 11th is...
I'll make a motion to accept the, the May 2nd and May 16th meetings as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Billman, second by Vice Mayor Rhodes. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Councilman French?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Ferrante?
Yes, and the motion passes unanimously. Denitively, we have a meeting scheduled for the 13th at 6 o'clock, and the 20th and the 27th. 20th, regular council meeting, 27th, CRA, and something else in there, too, budget.
Your CRA, continued budget work, and, and the CGA will be dealing with their recommendation on their organizational analysis, staffing level, and CRA staffing level.
We'll see you the next three Wednesdays. Anybody got anything for the record?
If I could just thank the city council for your patience and understanding and working with me, I appreciate it, and I will continue to work hard over the next couple of weeks.
And I want to thank you, Mike, for being a stand-up and professional and, and understanding the issues involved and the...
Oh, I, I get it.
And I think we, I think we saw some of that here tonight, and it's unfortunate.
Thanks, Mike.